Time for the township as a board, we are committed to getting it right, engage in the community, and in order to do that, we need some guidance from professionals. So really grateful for all of you for coming out to be able to present to us. I know that you've met some of my colleagues who are on the committee. This is the first time I'll be hearing from you, and I'm really looking forward to the presentation. So I'm going to quickly move. I know we started a little bit late, so FHI Studio, please. Think you're set up.
Can you just announce the timeframe, just so everyone knows that it's like a half hour, or there's time for question? I don't know what we...
Sure, Bill, can you speak to the details of that? I think it's a 20-minute presentation with 25 minutes for comment? Did I get that right?
Yeah, it's probably good. We'll let Kevin step through, just so we're all ready to go.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Bill. So the consultants were allotted a 20-minute presentation to present to the Board of Commissioners. Following that presentation would follow a 30-minute question-and-answering session between the consultants and the Commissioners at that point in time, and no deliberations and no decisions are going to be done tonight. So we can help the Commissioners as we get close to that 20-minute timeframe, if you would like.
Yeah, that would be great, to give the speakers a heads-up. What I will do is give you a... You want a five-minute heads-up, and then a one-minute? I'll do five and one.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, we're hoping this can be, you know, continue to be a conversation throughout of it, so we'll make our presentation. But we also want to encourage all of you, you know, along the way, you have any questions, or you want us to stop and talk about something, please do that. We see this as, I know, a little bit of an awkward conversation through this kind of divider, but these are the times that we look at. So first, I want to thank you all. Am I ready to go?
I think the only other housekeeping is that we are allowing for public comment during the same time period that Commissioners can ask questions, so I will start with Commissioners, and then call for public comment or questions.
I don't believe this was just a presentation to the Board, and Q&amp;A between the Board and the consultants, that we were not doing public comment at this meeting. But next Monday's meeting is when we'll have a consultant back in front of you, or a contract, an agenda item, and at that point, public comment can ensue.
Excellent. No public comment tonight. It's a discussion between us and you, so thank you.
Great. So thank you very much for the opportunity to present our approach to addressing your comprehensive plan. I'm going to start today just introducing a little bit our team, or your team, as it would be. So at the top, you're going to see there Leslie, myself, and Rory. Rory's going to serve as our deputy project manager. I apologize, she wasn't able to come today just because of vacation scheduling, but I'm going to talk to you a little bit about her. But before I do that, I want to talk to you about some of the other people that you see there on the screen. So Francisco is going to be the senior advisor. His role on this project is really to make sure that I have all the resources that I need as a project manager from FHI Studio in order to deliver on the plan that we've proposed to you all. Stephanie Derrick Carroll is going to be focusing on environmental and cultural resources. She has a background in architectural history, and she actually leads our environmental service line at FHI Studio. One of the great things about Stephanie is a lot of the work that she does is NEPA documentation for really complex infrastructure projects, and so she's going to be able to bring a lot of resources to bear regarding cultural and environmental resources on this project. Michael's going to be your all-things-mobility person. He really specializes in active mobility, so that's pedestrian, bicycle, micro-mobility stuff, but he has also done a lot of work with parking, transportation planning in terms of like bus transportation and regional rail transportation, so he's a really great resource on the team. And then Phil Barlow is going to be working on the open space element of this. He's a registered landscape architect and has a lot of experience doing sort of open space planning, like we'd be doing for Radnor. So with that, though, I want to introduce myself, and then Leslie's going to introduce herself a little bit, and then we're going to talk about the plan. So I'm a planner and urban designer, and I thought it might be beneficial to talk to you about what I mean by "I'm a planner." Well, that means that I focus on the policies, projects, programs, and regulations that work together to shape the built environment. That means building, protecting, and revitalizing communities. Okay, so that's my sort of planner expertise. But I also have a specialty in urban design. And when I say I have a specialty in urban design, what I'm talking about is I understand how sort of social activity interacts with the design of physical spaces in order to produce sort of vibrant economies. And I know that sounds very sort of like Merriam-Webster definition style to it, so I thought I'd just kind of give a little visual presentation of what that looks like. So from a planner perspective, what I'm able to do is really think at the big scale, at the municipal wide scale, about the policies and programs that are going to shape the built environment. So here is an example of some work that I did in Trenton, putting together a priority investment framework for them, helping them understand really how to invest their really limited resources in order to create catalytic development and change in their community. And then I can get down really into the weeds of it, and really talk about how those same policies and programs should shape, you know, the physical design of streets and public spaces and private property. My background is that I have a master's in urban planning from the University of Pennsylvania. I also did graduate coursework, excuse me, at the University of Buenos Aires, and for seven years, I taught essentially comprehensive planning, what I would do for you all, at the University of Pennsylvania in their graduate program. I bring a lot of the work that I do to a variety of different disciplines, including comprehensive planning, but also zoning and form-based codes, place making, transit-oriented development, small town, excuse me, small downtown planning, and complete streets of the town. And I've been very honored that two of my projects have won basically outstanding plan awards from the APA New Jersey chapter. That's the Trenton 250 Master Plan and the Cherry Hill Master Plan. I'm recently finishing the media hybrid form-based code. We actually just submitted last Friday, and I am very excited for that to be wrapped up. And I'm starting very soon providing racial equity consulting services to the city of Philadelphia as part of a larger team. As an instructor at the University of Pennsylvania, I've done a lot of planning work in the Pennsylvania area, so I have a real good understanding of all of the legal requirements and the things that are necessary in order to effectively plan in Pennsylvania. As I said, Rory Jacobson is going to be my deputy PM. I love having Rory on this team, I will just say that. We've worked together really well in the past. Here's some examples of some of the planning work that we've done. She has a lot of overlapping and similar focuses to the kind of work that I do. And, you know, one of the things I just want to reassure all of you, because I know this came up in our previous conversations, is despite the fact that Rory is in Connecticut and is going to be the deputy project manager on it, we have a long success, or a long history of success, working together across that sort of geography. And I can explain to you a little bit, if you like, in the Q&amp;A, about how we do that and why that's possible. And now I'll turn it over to Leslie.
Hello, hi. My name is Leslie Black, and I'm director of community engagement services for the firm. And I'm also pleased to say I'm a very nearby neighbor. I live about three miles away in East Town Township, so short drive away, different county, different township, but I am very familiar with Radnor. I have many years of experience on public engagement, working with municipalities right through to state and federal agencies. And I'd like to say that FHI Studio really prides, we pride ourselves on our public engagement toolkit that we've developed with a lot of different strategies and tools that we use to develop a specific engagement plan for each project we work on, to make sure that we are providing the correct tools to engage with the community. So I'm just going to turn it back to Adam to talk a little bit more about the project and approach.
Yeah, absolutely. So one thing that I always like to talk a little bit about is, we're called FHI Studio, and it's like, what is the studio part of FHI Studio? And so on a very basic level, our firm is organized around a strategy that looks at being multidisciplinary, collaborative, complex topic-oriented, and solution-based. That's what we mean by studio. But sometimes I think that picture speaks a thousand words. Really what we are is we're a group of people who work collaboratively together. We have deep benches of resources behind us, and we're always geared really focused towards our client, in this case, working to develop a great comprehensive plan for Radnor. So when you get an FHI Studio plan, if you were to hire us, what would you get? And I'm going to walk through a little bit of what that is. The first thing that you would get is a design-forward plan. So there are two elements to this. One of that is, is it's just going to be a very attractive document, and that's really important in today's modern comprehensive planning world, where plans are marketing materials. You're going to need to go out and compete for grants. You're going to need to go out and convince your constituents why the recommendations in this plan are important and valuable, and having a really attractive document is very valuable in that effort. At the same time, though, graphic design, as I always like to say, is not just about making things pretty. It's also about really clearly communicating ideas. And good graphic design improves understanding, you know, really expands the audience of the people who are paying attention to what you're doing. It makes things memorable, and I keep coming back, it makes things shareable. Can we use that word? Twenty years ago, I didn't think that word existed, but it becomes really important in our modern sort of communication environment. And so here's an example of something that we did for the Queens Bus Network redesign, where we took the major guiding principles, and we really tried to help people understand what it meant for them and why it was needed, and in a clear, easy-to-understand graphic. This is very different than the same idea communicated in two pages of text, and the accessibility of that is going to make a big difference for you all. It's also going to be a plan with design recommendations. You know, we are going to get into, because my sense is, is that this is very important to you all, how the street should be designed, how public spaces should be designed, and how the private realm should be designed. And we can give those recommendations to you as part of this plan. It's also going to be a plan for people. This is something that I hold very closely as a professional, and I want to give you a really concrete example of what I mean when I say FHI Studio is going to give you a plan for people. So this is actually a recommendation, a bridge recommendation, from your current comprehensive plan. Develop traffic calming strategies to help preserve neighborhoods. This is that rewritten in a people-oriented approach. Use traffic calming to create streets that people of all abilities, especially children, the elderly, and those with mobility challenges can continue to enjoy safely. What's the difference between these two? Well, one of them is about preserving neighborhoods, and one of them is about people of all abilities enjoying things safely. So if you're a resident or if you're a business owner in your community, you can see yourself in that second plan. You can see that this is about what my experience of streets are going to be like in my community should these recommendations go forward. There's another important part about this, though. When we start talking about people, we start opening ourselves up to funding opportunities that are different. So in this example, when we're talking about children and the elderly, we're opening up funding opportunities like Safe Roots to School Funding, or funding through AARP. There's not a lot of funding out there for preserving neighborhoods, and that distinction is a really important one as we go forward. The other thing is you're going to get a plan by people, okay? And what I mean by that is, when FHI does our work, we make sure that residents and business owners and stakeholders have an opportunity to tell us what's important to them. And so this is an example from the Jersey City Master Plan, small area work that we did, where we actually gave people basically a survey, it was part of our virtual workshop, where they got to choose what their priority issues were. And as you can see, multimodal mobility, development standards, and local environment were really high-priority topics for us, or, excuse me, topics for people who were participating. As a result, we were able to really focus our work on a lot of those issues. We didn't neglect those other issues, but we really understood what the priority was there. When we talk about a plan by people, we also mean that their words are actually in the comprehensive plans that we write. So here's a further sort of elaboration of that Jersey City Master Plan. Those are quotes from residents that sit alongside recommendations that we made, that we made, excuse me, that help reinforce why those recommendations are so important. And I'm going to give an example of that really quickly here. So this quote is one of the most powerful quotes that I've come across in my work, is, "I am frequently fearful for mine and my family's life. As we cross intersections, as drivers do not stop, obey traffic rules, or care for pedestrians, or non-car, truck users in general." That's a really powerful statement, and something that me standing up in front of an audience saying like, "It's a real not-safe place for you to be walking," doesn't carry that same amount of weight. And so as part of our work, you know, we brought in real, you know, recommendations here to improve crosswalks, to eliminate rights on reds, to talk about where trucks could go, to, you know, install crossing islands, to narrow lane widths. And one of the things that you'll notice along all of these is these are real sort of infrastructure investments, and they're not like, reduce the speed limit. Because one of the things that we were hearing from people is people aren't obeying traffic rules. And we can get into the reasons why, if you have any questions, but, you know, we also talked about what are physical things that we can put in the street that would act as barriers between traffic and pedestrian realms, to make people feel safer when they're walking around the street. So those are two examples that you see there. In the end, this is one of the reasons why FHI Studio routinely gets feedback from our clients like this. We feel seen. This truly reflects the feedback from stakeholders, and ultimately, the whole neighborhood. I really look forward to seeing the implementation of this plan, supporting however, and, excuse me, and supporting however we do it. And now I'm going to hand it over to Leslie to talk a little bit about how we go through the process of getting all that great information.
Yeah, Adam has laid it out really nicely, but we're going to start with you and the project staff to plan and coordinate. Oh, sorry. He's taller than me. How's that? Is that better? Okay, okay. I can bend up? Okay, great. All right. So with respect to planning and coordinating, we'll work with you and project staff to develop a community engagement plan that will lay out, it will actually be the roadmap for how the outreach is conducted for the project. It'll have a schedule, a set of activities, as well as the different tools that would be implemented. We'll build upon existing communication networks. You have a variety of commissions and boards. You have current planning activities, such as the Radnor School District's comprehensive plan with a dedicated communications team. And you have key stakeholders and civic leaders that we can work with you and coordinate to reach out to, to best understand how to reach memberships and disseminate information about the plan. You also have a wide array of community organizations. We've pulled some of these from the township's website. And so these are established networks and relationships that the township has with these organizations, that again, we'd like to build upon in order to broaden the outreach and connect with more people. It's so important to inform people about the project. If they don't know the project's going on, they can't provide input. Okay, and so we will work to both inform and promote using, leveraging online as well as social media channels. And it's very important for us to, as we are listening, we are also learning. It helps inform our plan and helps, as we get input that we can use in the plan, as Adam noted with the quotes, it helps build consensus for the outcomes of the project. So we find collaboration is key, and we work with our engagement plan to adapt and adjust as we go. I went through that quickly, so I could turn it back to Adam to finish up on the approach.
No problem. I think we'll get plenty of engagement questions as we get into it. So clearly, this is going to be a data-informed plan. We're going to dig into the census information and all of the DVRPC data that's out there. We're going to get into the mapping. We're going to look at the spatial relationships of all of this sort of stuff. But the other thing that we're going to do is we're going to provide expertise along the way. So this is an example from the media hybrid form-based code work that we did. And basically, what it's showing is all the different outcomes that were possible under the media's current zoning ordinance. And if you look at that, what you would say, you know, you might say to yourself is, wow, this could be a very different street, depending on what option a developer decided to take on this. And so this graphic was really helpful for us in explaining to residents why a form-based code was so important, and why we needed to take a different approach than their current approach to addressing their zoning issues. One thing that we will definitely give you is a land use plan. This is a critical component of every comprehensive plan. It's going to have all of the standard elements of a comprehensive plan, but one of the things that's changed in the last 20 years, and has been a real innovation in land use planning, has been a discussion of building typologies. So one of the things that we've learned a lot in our process is, if you start throwing around this idea of like, oh, well, there's commercial here, and what about multifamily housing there, it gets very abstract. And what we really need to start talking about are not just the uses that people are committing, but the form of these uses. And so this is again from the media hybrid form-based code, where we brought in some of these what are often called missing middle housing typologies, and talk people through, well, what about multifamily in this configuration? What about multifamily in that configuration? Would you be comfortable here? What issues would you have? What about the parking? And it gives a lot more nuanced and detailed conversation that really ends up moving a lot of those conversations forward, past the kind of like, oh, well, I don't want this in my community. Well, okay, well, what if it looked like this? What if it didn't? We're also going to give you an implementable plan. And this is sort of the structure that we would recommend of vision, goals, and strategies and actions. And that is going to be very different than your current master plan, where right now, the mission of the comprehensive plan can be found conveniently in the 10th chapter of your comprehensive plan. You've got to go to the 25th page of the 26-page executive summary in order to find it. That doesn't make a plan very implementable. It doesn't make it very accessible. The other thing that's going on with your current comprehensive plan right now is that you've got your recommendations and you're sort of separated out. You've got your goals in your elements, and then you've got this chapter at the end, which is your implementation guide. So what happens is, you've got this housing goal, promote the rehabilitation of deteriorating and substandard residential properties. And then I had a little DeLorean up here, but I took it out, and now I'm bummed about it. But you get in your little DeLorean, you go eight PDFs and eight pages later, right, only to find out that the strategy in order to implement that is to continue the township's property maintenance inspection and enforcement program. Yep. So we're really going to bring those recommendations and strategies together into the same part of the document. Really, in conclusion, and I think I'm going to hit my one-minute mark here, is that you can really expect a design-forward plan from us, one that's a plan by people, for people, and with people. It's going to be a plan made with people, a data-informed plan, an expert-guided plan, and of course, you're going to have a land use plan as part of this. Just so there's no doubts about this, you will have all of the elements that are required as part of a comprehensive plan that the state requires. So we will fulfill all of those requirements as part of our sort of recommended structure. From our team, you can expect a group of people who just love to collaborate with one another and our clients. We've got such a deep bench of experts. One of the things I love most about working for FHI, and I really do love working for FHI, is how many people are sort of cross-trained in different disciplines. We all speak the same planning language. And then finally, you're going to get unparalleled public involvement expertise. I mean, Leslie really is the best, and that's my personal opinion. And you're going to get really collaborative hands-on project management. So with that, I may have gone 30 seconds over just a little bit, but I open it up to questions and conversation.
Thank you so much. Very informative, and I appreciate the passion for what you do. I'm going to allow my colleagues to ask questions before I do. Anna Marie, do you want to start?
So you alluded to the fact that you would talk about how you work with Rory, and that was one of the first questions that came to mind when you introduced her by slide, but then you, you know, said you would address that, so please do.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think this is something that's really important to understand about how FHI works. So a little bit of history here. So FHI started as a one-woman planning firm, and for a long time was all, oh, sorry, you're right, was a one-woman planning firm, and for a long time was what used to be called telecommuting, right? Everybody was literally on the phone, talking with one another. And we never had a sort of like corporate office for a number of years. As the internet developed and as we grew, we really grew as a sort of like telecommuting company. And so we had all of this infrastructure in place before the pandemic with like teams and how to share files and work. And so the way that Rory and I typically work is, we check in on a regular basis on Teams. We're always, we're seeing each other, we're having conversations, and then where appropriate, FHI Studio has a really strong policy of, they pay for us to commute to work together. So we can go into New York, she can come down here, I can go up into Connecticut. And because the two of us are working on a number of projects together right now, we can kind of bring those projects together, and I can spend, for example, like a day or two up there. And like I said, if Rory ever needs to come down here, and for example, for like a site visit or something like that, that's never going to be a problem for FHI Studio.
Other questions? Commissioner Jones?
Well, just to follow up on Rory as the deputy PM, what is, so I guess she's like your assistant, or how would you, how would you describe her work in relationship to what you do?
Yeah, absolutely. That's great. I would never call Rory my, I would never call Rory my, I would never call Rory my assistant. You know, I joked I was going to call us Batman and Robin. We're kind of a team in that respect. So the way that it typically works on a project like this is, at project, as a project manager, my role and responsibility is to typically, you know, oversee the entire project and work with people to understand their specific roles and pull things in. Rory is going to be on all the calls with me. She's going to be sort of there along the way. And, you know, one of the things that Rory's job is to do is just to make sure things stay on track, make sure that I'm not dropping anything along the way. But then we work together, and, you know, quite honestly, depending on where my workload is, where her workload is, we're trading off tasks, we're handing things back and forth. It's a really sort of collaborative relationship that we have together. Yeah.
Commissioner Baransky?
Hey, thank you. Adam and Stephanie, I really appreciate you coming back. I just had a couple of quick questions. So there was something that stood out to me that you said, working to preserve neighborhoods. So tell me a little bit about what you mean by that, and how do you get to the point of, this is a neighborhood that needs to be preserved, or this is what it looks like, and we want to preserve it in this way? How do you get to that point?
Yeah, it's such an important question right now, and it's such an important question for communities like Radnor, where you do have these great neighborhoods. What my experience is in sort of the comprehensive planning level is, is that when you get into this conversation about preserving neighborhoods, you really have to start asking your questions about what is it that you want to preserve? And that if you start that conversation from like the lived experience of residents and the people who are there, and start talking about what are the kind of interactions, what are the things that are important to you as a, as a starting point for that conversation, and then move into the physical elements that support those activities, you get a lot further than if you start with the physical elements that you want to preserve and work backwards. So an example of that is, we've worked in a lot of communities where people start to say like, you know, I want to be able to continue to interact with my neighbors. You know, I sit there and I'm able to go out and, you know, in a place where I was working recently, it's like, our kids play in the street, and they, you know, they really like it, and we want to be able to have that interaction between our neighbors. And it's like, okay, we're starting from that perspective. That's what you care about. And then we start thinking about, well, what are the streetscape elements, right? What are the things on the street that allow kids to play? What are the, that allow neighbors to interact? And you go, oh, well, like sidewalks could be a good part of that. And you go, but wait, you don't have any sidewalks in front of your house. Maybe that's something that's important to think about. So it changes the conversation about a little bit around that. Now, there are also physical things that people want to preserve, and I don't want to totally set that aside. Radnor has a historic development quality to it, and there are going to be physical elements that need to be preserved in that process. But it's a little bit more about sort of where you start and get into that.
And so quickly, I mean, to that point on some of the things, so how do you present a plan, or how do you get to the point, or, you know, kind of marry the, the a plan, or how do you get to the point, or, you know, kind of marry the, the needs to what's realistic, or what a community can actually do or afford, or, you know, can everybody put a sidewalk in? Does anybody even want a sidewalk? You know, how do you get, how do you get to that point?
Well, one, if you solve that particular equation, patent it, go out and make yourself a ton of money, right? Because there's no perfect answer to that. But a lot of it is really about marrying my experience and our team's experience with your local understanding of needs. So, a lot of what we look at is, for example, like prioritization and what's important to people, and how do you prioritize investments? Because the funding isn't unlimited, and you can't do everything. And so, if we go back to that example from Jersey City where we saw the charts about what sort of people prioritize, that gives you a better sense of where the town should be investing its money. The other thing that really comes out with a lot of the work that we do is just, you know, making sure that we strike a nice balance between, we are looking 10 years out, the municipality is probably very different in some ways than a lot of people would have imagined it 10 years ago. In some ways, it's probably very similar, but you need to be a little ambitious without being unrealistic. And we have a lot of experience doing that.
Okay, so I just have two more questions. Well, actually, I guess one. I was glad to see that you had the school district listed in there, because the school district is looking to do, and they're working right now on, you know, some significant enhancements to the building. So, I was glad to see that you have that in there. But when it comes to ordinances and ordinance recommendations, so when it comes to the, the nuts and bolts of making things happen, or zoning issues, how, do you look at what we've already got and make recommendations around that? And then, also, do you provide some support moving forward? Because what we don't want is certainly a plan that's just going to, everyone participates in, everyone's all excited about it, and then it just sits on a shelf, and we don't do anything with it. So, how do you, how do you propose kind of helping us move it forward once it's complete?
Yeah, I mean, this is, you know, this is a question that municipalities all across the country have struggled with for a long time, and there are a couple of things that we've learned along the way that can be very valuable. So, yes, in terms of your questions, especially your zoning ordinance, we will be getting in there. We're not going to write new zoning ordinance as part of the comprehensive plan, but we will make recommendations about changes to the ordinances that you could then form the foundation for future zoning update work, which we do. So, we've done a lot of that work. That's what we were doing in media. Basically, they had a comprehensive plan that said do a form-based code for their residential areas, and then they hired us through the Transportation and Community Development Initiative, a DVRPC, to actually do that work. The other thing that we've found has been very effective are things like demonstration projects, which we've done a lot of work on, which is to say, "Hey, let's find a project. We don't have to take it all the way to completion. We're just going to take a weekend, and we're going to make a change to the street, or make a change to this public space, and show the possibilities around that." And that's been very effective in getting people motivated to go after things like grants, to start moving that process forward, so that plans don't feel like, "Hey, we just adopted it, we got all these great ideas." But that's also what's going to be covered in the implementation plan, is sort of like, what are recommendations for you going forward?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Farhey, any questions?
I'd actually like to defer my time to you, because you were not there, so if you have questions, as well as staff. So, I appreciate it. I have my questions answered, so defer my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. I do have several questions, so I will take the time. A couple of things. One big one is your timeline. You didn't speak to it at all in your presentation. I see it in the book, but can you elaborate a little bit?
Yeah.
On a timeline and significant milestones that we would expect?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's one of the important things that we would do when we kicked off any project, is to basically finalize that timeline. We've put out a timeline that we think is appropriate for you all in the speed of that, but we've done this process at a much more accelerated timeline, if that's something that you all would be interested in. Typically, the way that we work is we like to sort of go through a pretty, a pretty strong public engagement process relatively early in the process. That's what that online virtual workshop is, because it really helps us understand and set the tone for a lot of the work. So, we're going to be doing a lot of stakeholder engagement and that kind of work upfront, and then we'll start getting into some more of the time recommendations.
It is, and you went right into my next question, which is, having not been in the earlier discussions, maybe you went a little bit more detail, but I would love to know what engagement looks like with our community.
Sure, and thank you for the time to elaborate on it a bit. So, as I mentioned in the presentation, we would start with the engagement plan in coordination with the, the needs and wishes of, of what you anticipate, because you know your stakeholders and what they're expecting. We have laid out in our proposal an engagement plan that would leverage online engagement, as Adam mentioned, with the virtual workshop. The township is very plugged in. Over 95% of, of the citizens either have a computer in their home, and they're all plugged into internet. So, when you get 95 to 97% of your residents having internet access and capability, you know that virtual engagement is going to be a very powerful tool. So, the website comes into play as the information hub for people to land on, find out the information about the project, ways to participate. They will see the schedule, and when the opportunities to engage will occur over the course of the project. And we are firm believers engaging, in engaging early and often through, so that we weave the outreach in throughout, and that we're getting the type of input that you saw Adam present. It, it's so powerful to have citizens have their voices heard and incorporated into plan recommendations. It really builds consensus, and it really builds your champions for moving forward with initiatives, because people are buying into the process, so. So, with the virtual workshop, we make them public-friendly, we make them easy to navigate around, they're informative, and people can, there was a slide that showed up, you know, people pinning dots on an image and providing their input, what they liked about it, what they didn't like about it. So, those are really engaging, but a lot of data is collected from that information. And then, the in-person events, we'll have an in-person workshop, we'll have targeted focus groups with stakeholders that we need to have a further conversation with and understand their issues and opportunities. And then, we'll get out into the community. We'll take some meetings to the public where they congregate, congregate, because we know the traditional public meeting, you often get your same set of constituents attending, and we want to have many people participate. And then, I really want to see that we are also adjusting our outreach as we are collecting input. We're going to identify, hopefully, through some demographic data collection, if we have any gaps in the outreach, so that we can reach out to those populations as well that we're not hearing from.
And in your experience, a township our size, or a, you know, community our size, how many people are actually engaged? You know, we're what, 35,000 people in Radnor? Well, I mean, do you get hundreds? Do you get thousands? Do you get?
I will say this.
Double digits.
We just did the, we just did the master plan engagement for Red Bank, which is in New Jersey. Oh, yep. We just did the engagement for Red Bank in the online workshop. That workshop had 250 participants, and Red Bank is about 1,200, or excuse me, 12,000 people. So, one of the things that I think it's really important to understand about the online engagement is, is that it's, we're using it as a really critical point in the process. And that is, when we're trying to get a lot of information from people, it's designed to be mobile-friendly, so you can just like hit a QR code and do it on your phone. And we have had just like unparalleled sort of responses to that that go beyond, and this is where it's really important to me, it goes beyond like a survey.
Yeah.
You know, it's not just like, "Oh, pick from a multiple choice option." It's like respond to, to images, put things on maps, really get into the nitty-gritty of it. And one of the things that we've chosen to do in all of them is we leave open-ended opportunities for people. So, whether I like it or not, we end up reading through like 250 people's comments on four different, you know, activities. It's a lot of reading, it's a lot of kind of getting a sense, but you get a real like qualitative understanding of what people care about.
It's where you get the quotes. It's where you hear those real words spoken by your community. So, it's really important, and, and we find we mesh the virtual with the in-person. It's, it's a really great combination on, on projects large and small.
Just a couple more questions. You had mentioned sort of our, our last plan and talking to people about, you know, how the, how the, what the community used to look like, what it looks like now, and now we're talking about in the future. How do you, how do you get that? How do you get a sense of a community of where it's been to where it is today? Because I do think that that's an important element of where we are today to where we go. So, how do you get that sort of historical institutional knowledge? Who do you talk to for that?
Yeah, I mean, we talk to a lot of people. I mean, those, those early stakeholder engagement efforts are really important. I mean, we are, we are doing, I'm doing a lot of talking now. Oh, I'm doing a lot of talking now. If you were to meet me in those meetings, I'd be basically quiet. I'm asking questions, and I'm listening a lot. And I'm doing a lot of active listening. So, somebody says something to me, and I'm saying, "Wait, so is what you mean this?" And then, it gives them opportunities to elaborate and dig into it. We're reading your past plans, we're reading newspapers, you know, we're, we're walking around with people and talking to people on the, and over time, you really start to get a qualitative sense of where a place is. And we're also looking at things like what DVRPC is putting out, what the state is putting out, what the federal government is putting out, looking at where the money is going, and what signals that sort of saying about where, you know, where that money is going to start, you know, pushing Radnor towards. That doesn't mean you have to go there, but as a real, you know, really, you know, core example of this, you all are sort of a, a quintessential TOD community, right? And there is a lot of money and interest in continuing to build TOD communities. What that looks like in Radnor is going to be a big question mark, I think, as part of the planning. Oh, and TOD is Transit Oriented Development Communities. Thank you.
I think I, so, talk to me about how you engage with staff and board, but mostly staff.
Yeah, I mean, we have a, generally, we set regular sort of check-ins with staff. And typically, the way that that works is we set it as like an every-two-weeks kind of recurring meeting. At different parts of the process, we sometimes have to have, move those up, because there's a deliverable coming up, and we need to kind of move things forward. And sometimes, you know, it's summer vacation, and there's not as much going on, and so you can, can drop one. And that's where I was getting back to this idea of, you know, as a project manager, flexibility and collaboration is really important. So, if staff wants me to come down here and say, "Hey, we just got this, we need to sit down around a table and talk about it," you know, I jump in my car, or I get on the train, and I'm out here, and I can do that.
How big is the firm?
50, yes?
We're just over 50 people. We, we have long virtual hallways, as Adam mentioned, it's the way we've always operated. I've been with the firm close to 17 years now, and we are where the projects are. We are firmly committed and dedicated to embracing the location where we are the project manager and/or the support staff. So, that, that is critically important to us as a planning firm, and we really embrace it, because I am the outreach director of outreach, but I, we're all planners, so we can talk the talk, but we can take it into public-friendly terms, and so we collaborate, work well together, and so we, we, we may not be 1,000 people, but we are, we're very strong. We're a very strong 50-person firm. With a lot of specialists, and it's a great, great group of people.
It is.
That's all my questions. We have just over five minutes left, if there, Sean, did you want to jump in?
No, I, I, I mean, I'll go last if there's time, but I'd like to hear from Bill or from Kevin, if you guys have anything.
Well, you know, as we discussed in our, our lead-up to tonight's meeting, this is really the commissioner's opportunity to get a feel for each of these firms. So, we're going to sit back and actively listen, or actually more passively listen tonight, and we can help address any questions that the board has from our perspective. But in terms of getting to know the, the individual presenters, we'd like to stay over here.
All right. Then I'll, so, the, the best thing that you can do is community engagement. What I find is you're going to hit those, those blocks of whether it's people, you know, a school board, or the Wayne Business District. How are you going to get the people that may or may not be interested, but after this happens, you're going to be like, "Well, why didn't, why didn't I know about it? Why didn't you let me know?" How are you going to engage people? And the answer is probably it's difficult, but what are those tricks, tricks in your backs that you can help engage those people that aren't Radnor, Wayne, Little League, or something like that?
Right. And that, that's probably where the pop-up outreach and the online and the social media, using your social media channels to get the word out. It may not be Wayne Little League, but it may be Citizen XYZ, who lives on XYZ Street, that is also plugged in or follows you, and they'll see the note that this project is underway, and this is your opportunity to have a say in a project. So, we will implement the, the outreach channels that you find, that you are, that you find are successful. So, the online engagement is key, but then the boots on the ground with some of the pop-up events, at community events, where we take the meeting and the information to people is, is another piece of it. And, yeah, it's, I think also talking with community leaders and ask, how do they get information out to people? And how if we can send a flyer through their distribution channel or their email list just so that people, and it's, it is difficult, but, you know, the school district email chain or backpacks sent home with flyers, it's, it does work. You eventually, it takes many touches. It usually takes about three touches for someone to say, "Oh, this thing keeps, I keep seeing this, I should probably pay attention." We try to also implement branding early in the process to have a really eye-catching look to the studies, so someone might stop if they see a poster on a community board at the Radnor Memorial Library, or at their school community board. So, there are a lot of different ways to reach out and, and touch people and make sure that they are involved and, and word-of-mouth. We really count on our active citizens and stakeholders to be ambassadors for the project as well. So, we'll, we'll do our best to ensure we give everybody a lot of tools to work with.
Yeah, can I just follow up with that really quickly? I think one of the big changes in a lot of this has been social media. Despite my personal preferences about social media and Facebook, it is incredibly effective at targeting people. So, one of the things that we've done in a lot of projects is Facebook ads are actually very cheap, because they're really geared towards like big companies are spending like hundreds of thousands of dollars on it. So, for a couple hundred dollars, you can geo-target essentially people and hit them with ads about the plan, and that helps get the word out to people who would never hear about it. The other thing that I think is really important is what we're always trying to go for is we're never going to be able to talk to everybody. Like, that's not realistic, but we want to hear all the voices. And for me, the, the sign of like, I've done my job as a comprehensive plan consultant, is we're in the adoption process, and somebody shows up, and they say, "Why didn't I hear about this? Here's my grudge," whatever it is. And to see, you know, elected officials or staff be able to turn to them and say, "Well, we thought about that, and this is how we responded to that issue." So, it's not that we're going to hear everybody, but when every issue comes up, or most of the issues come up, you all are going to be informed and educated and be able to respond to those constituents and explain to, you know, them why the plan says what it is. Because in the end, I do recognize that you are all elected officials, you all have to go back to your constituencies and be able to explain this plan, and that's going to be an important part of, of what we deliver, is a sort of ability for you all to.
One more question, and Commissioner Baranski brought this up, which I thought was a great point. You can tell us everything that you want to do. We are going to, and I'm sure you got, everyone here is going to give us a million great ideas, but we're going to be constrained with a very, I won't ask Bill about the budget, but a very, well, we're getting out of COVID. So, how does that kind of mesh in line of, here are some great things, but realistically, what but realistically, what we can afford? Are you going to be asking it? Do you look at the budget? Do you talk to prioritize with staff prioritize? And if you speak to that?
Yeah, when we when we think about recommendations, we're always thinking around your capacity to be able to implement them. And one of the great things about actually some of the work that I'm doing right now with the City of Philadelphia is we're looking at the IIJA bill and basically looking to see how the City of Philadelphia can position itself to be more competitive on some of those grants. That same the raised grants, all of that kind of discretionary funding is something that we're very tapped into and can bring to this. The other thing that I think is really important is you all have a great set of partners in your community here, right? This idea of public-private partnership has become a really important part of the plan implementation process. And that doesn't just mean, you know, government and developers. It means all those civic associations that you've got. It means all the institutions that are here and play a really important role in your civic life. You're going to have to work with SEPTA and the county and all of these different entities to move them forward. And fortunately, although working with them can sometimes be a little hand wringing, right? They also bring with them funds and and implementation abilities.
Okay, well, I really want to thank you for a great presentation. I think we got a lot of information and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. And just as a last point, if if staff has any questions or if you have any follow-up questions, please don't hesitate to reach out. We're happy to answer that. Thank you.
Madam President, if I could, while the next group gets prepared, it's probably worth mentioning for the benefit of the commissioners that weren't part of the subgroup or those watching abroad or residents watching from home that all of the the firms are presenting tonight, the the prices quoted were underneath the amount that we had planned for on a budgetary basis. So from that perspective, budget-wise, for this project, we should be good.
Are there maybe this is something Kevin could answer. You I'm sure you know. Are there other costs associated with this whole comprehensive planning process that would be outside of just engaging a consultant?
Yeah, I mean, if we get into particulars, I'll I'll ask Kevin to jump in. But I think there's always opportunities to spend more. I think when we get into the public outreach and some of this came up in our our first round of meetings, you know, if we as a township decide we want more pop-ups or if we want more citizen engagement that require additional meetings, we might run into situations there where there's additional costs. But I think in any regard, we budgetarily, we should be okay from from our from where we were planning to where we're at tonight.
Well, thank you for that good planning.
Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin. So we are moving on to our second presenters from Bergman. So if you can get your presentation ready. Our representatives from Bergman here.
We have it up here. Yeah, I can I can I can turn it up. Oh, there it is. And I'm just curious, do we speak into the mic and do I can hear or can we?
Yeah, so we are televised tonight. This is a live public meeting. So that's why we ask you to speak into the mic. You don't have to have your face right up to it, but it has to be able to capture your voice. And your slide deck will also be presented to the public. So if you're speaking to it, just keep that in mind that we're out. We also have a television audience.
Sure, sure.
But feel free to get started. As we said, we have a we're allotting you twenty minutes and I will time. Twenty minutes for presentation. I'll give you a five minute and I'll give you a one minute. And then we'll move into questions from the commissioners for about twenty-five minutes.
Madam President, just real quick, I neglected to mention this earlier. All these presentations will be up on the website sometime tomorrow for the public to view as well.
Fantastic. Okay, so start when you're ready. All right.
Thank you very much. My name is Dave Schwartz with the Bergman slash CED. Here today with Dana Reeves, our Commercial Practice Leader, John Simons, one of our planning principals, and Todd Poole from Forward Planning. So I don't know if it's nice to do introductions, but we'll do we'll do a bit more of those in one quick second here. So just give you a quick little quick little summary of our firm. So Bergman recently merged with Colliers Engineering and Design, CED. We are now a firm of about eighteen hundred people, give or take. We're full-size planning we're we're full service planning firm. I have to think of this as a Goldilocks-sized firm. We have we are big enough to where we can address any issues that that are out there in the areas of specialization, but we're small enough to where every project matters. It's a very large firm. And if you weren't doing a multimillion-dollar freeway job, you were relegated to to the basement. We actually are a firm that appreciates all projects. And our planning group within Colliers Engineering and Design is fairly small, fairly compact. We have about twenty certified planners and a couple of it's called FAICPs, fellows uh fellows who who are AICPs. It's kind of in another level, if you will, of of a planning seniority. John actually is one of them. So we do projects all across the the northeast, a lot of campaigns of plans. And one of the things that really is one of our hallmarks is public outreach. And everybody says they do great they do great public outreach. I have now worked for five firms throughout my my twenty-year career. And I can tell you that that Bergman and Colliers, that is very much a focal point. And they do it like nobody else does. We do it like like anybody else from what I've seen. So I'll go in a little bit. And Todd, do you want to talk about Forward or I could? Sure, okay.
Hi, good evening. My name is Todd Poole. I'm managing principal and president of Forward Planning. We're land use economists and we perform economic and real estate analysis on before on behalf of public and private sector clients nationally. And we do a lot of support, you know, for comprehensive plans locally and regionally. So that our role on this team is to do exactly that, the economic real estate market analysis piece. And that's really a critical part of comprehensive plans, make sure that you can pay for whatever is being proposed. So I'll go over a little bit of our of our scope and our approach, also in the proposal, obviously. But but comp plans generally ask three questions. Where are we? Where do you want to go? How do we get there? Now, for every comprehensive plan, everybody says that they're going to look back and and look at previous efforts. We do that as well, but not just to check a box. We want to look back. What we do is we actually look at all the recommendations from previous plans. We look at the recommendations, see what worked, what did not work and why did they work or not work? Then you can emulate things that worked well and you can identify barriers for things that did not work. So we don't want to just give you a, you know, review of what's been done before. We want to actually dig a bit deeper into it, figure out why things work, what hasn't worked, how you do it again. And for and then you establish base trends. And we don't want to give you a big ream of papers that show you cookies amounts of data that won't that didn't mean anything. We try to pick out and identify useful information. I just picked out one thing here. I don't know if you can see very well up on the screen there, but this is the poverty level in Radnor. And people think Radnor, they think, oh, affluent, everybody out there had had big homes and everything. But one thing that we picked out just kind of from a quick look-through is that Radnor has a poverty rate of six percent, which is lower than statewide average, but it's not zero. It's actually a little bit higher than that. So and I think pointing out some of these things like that can can show people why certain policies are are being recommended and give people, I think, a broader look at the at their community. So where do we want to go? First thing I mentioned before, public outreach. And I'll talk about that in some detail in just a minute here or two. Then you develop community themes. We don't want to develop comp plans that have different silos. We don't take circulation as one silo and land use as another and everything else. We we look at this plan based on these issues and try to figure out where these issue, you know, what areas these issues cut across. Now, I'll talk about that as well. That's a a planning strategy used by DCED. It gives away a lot of money, actually. So it's always good to make them happy. And what we really do is identify these these issues that are very specific that are very specific to the community as opposed to giving kind of like broad views. So here's a picture of one of our pop-up events. There's me there in the middle with my son that's on. And this is just one of those just some of our examples of public outreach. Usually what we do with public outreach, we we do not, and you may notice in the plan, we do not identify a set out comprehensive or a comprehensive public outreach strategy. What we do is we offer various ideas. And we say, here's our budget for public outreach. We usually make it the biggest part of our budget. And we say, here is what we're going here, we can spend. Here are some ideas. We'll talk to you. We will kind of, you know, work with you to figure this out. Now, I live nearby Havreford, so I do have kind of an idea about the main line and kind of good ways of of outreach. But we will, of course, meet with you guys, talk to you guys, figure out, you know, what works best within our budget. One of the, you know, things that we mentioned last time was about me about reaching harder reach communities. And we have a lot of ways of of doing that. We don't just do online surveys and public meetings. We also do things like meeting in a box, which is one of our ways that you 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 give a bunch of materials to somebody who holds regular meetings and you have them do a public meeting. It's a way to reach people who don't show up at public meetings or who have access or going back to this to the to the to the web. We also do pop up events, which I love. Those are where you go to an event that's already happening, go to where people are, talk to them there. So we'll talk to you guys about the best ways of doing that, best events to go to and get out there and reach a lot of folks. And finally, how do we get there? So I mentioned in the proposal, the implementable comprehensive plan approach. That's something that DCED had been pushing back in two thousand and ten. They did a review. A lot of townships did a millennial plan in the year two thousand. They two thousand and ten, they reviewed these and they really tried to figure out what makes a good plan. And they found that the best plans are ones that are based around specific issues, not around themes or or not around silos, but around issues, ones that are specific and measurable. The idea with that is, you know, I think in the last plan, there was something in there about install bicycle facilities along some local and sector roads. That's great, but how do you know if you've achieved that? You know, if you've done it on three roads, has that worked? And on two, has that worked? So what we like to do is to is to say, okay, install five miles of bike compatible, you know, of bicycle compatible features along roads. And then in five years, you can look back and say, okay, we installed three. We have two to go. But you can measure those things. We want to give you things that are measurable, that actually can be seeking to achieve something, not just reach some kind of general goal that's out there, only do with the process as opposed to a plan. We also want to be sure that we comply with the MPC because that is what gives plans its legal backing. So what we do at the end of all of our plans, we do a bit of a hybrid plan where we show element snapshots just to make sure they're all covered. You give a page or two of each element, make sure that if somebody asks about something that wasn't discussed explicitly in one of the issues, it's it's covered at the end. It's kind of used as a backfill. And then one thing really we focus on is implementation. A plan is only as good as its ability to be implemented. And I'll give you an example, actually, of kind of one thing that we did in a recent plan. We did a bikeway study in eastern Delaware County, right nearby Upper Darby, Lansdowne, East Lansdowne and Yaden. And one thing we identified early in this study, the planning study, there was a road that was being repaved by PennDOT. And it was Lansdowne Avenue, a very big road that connects through a lot of the area. It's very it's very road that a lot of people desired bike facilities on there. They proposed it along about half. We asked why. PennDOT said, I don't know. Municipality didn't really want anything. Municipality said, well, you know, PennDOT didn't ask us. So we got them all in a room together and basically came up with a good solution. PennDOT has a very good solution now for bringing bike lanes. Municipality signs MOU to repaint little bike sensors in the roads and install signs. PennDOT will do a bike lane. So we talked, we get everybody in a room and I extended that bike lane all the way up to Garrett Road. So so about a mile of bike facilities. And this is a this is not a rendering. It's actually the picture before and after. It was done during the plan, actually, in the summer of two thousand and twenty-one. Actually, for the same plan, just as a side note, it ended this past March, but until in January, actually, of this year, there was a grant out there through DVRPC, which is the local MPO for the region called a TAPS grant. We mentioned it to the townships. They wanted to go for it. We gave them material. They went for it and now there's half a million bucks going towards them to install these bike lanes. So we try to focus on implementation. What can you do now? There's no reason to wait till the end. After our recommendations are out there, then try to do some. We try to focus on starting things during the process. We give the names of people, the contact information, emails, phone, not just say, call PennDOT. That's the main thing. Or, you know, contact DVRPC, who, where? We'll give you the actual way, you know, the actual step-by-step implementation measures for high priority components of the plan. And if possible, start the process while the plan's in in progress. No reason to wait. And just a couple of different levels of what we'll look at for revitalization and implementation. You can look at small scale. We'll look at certain areas for revival, areas where you can look at for reuse. And then, of course, you want to look at return on investment. Plannings projects generally give you very good ROI. And why our team, I'll give you a I'll just kind of go over a couple of things here briefly. We'll be right back. I want to leave plenty of time for questions and answers. So one of them is personal service. I mentioned that a second ago. We are a medium-sized firm, but we are able to, you know, draw in our national expertise if needed. If there's something that is that is that that you can focus, that's a very it's an area of specialization, chances are we have somebody who knows about it. In fact, chances are we have somebody who specializes in that in that aspect. Yet we are a very local firm. I live nearby. We have we have several offices in Pennsylvania. And we're going to draw mostly staff, I think, from 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 this region. And we have a lot of local knowledge, like I said, live next door, know the area a little bit. And then finally, I won't beat this horse anymore, but focus on implementation. That's really one of our hallmarks. And I also close with my favorite quote from my favorite show, Game of Thrones. It was I don't know if you're a fan of of the series, but Tyrion Lannister one time said, said, "The history of the world is made by people talking quietly in elegant rooms." And we're in Delaware County Sports Hall of Fame here, so I think it's pretty darn elegant. So with that, I want to sit down and have a chat with you guys and open up a couple of questions.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation. And I'm sure we do have lots of questions for you. So like we did for the last group, Anna Marie, do you mind starting? Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Borowski, do you want to ask questions?
Sure. So I guess, thank you again. Thank you very much and thank you for being here again. We appreciate you coming back. So I just want to and I won't. Are you going to ask about community and engagement? All right, so I'm going to leave that to Maura. But I have some questions. So the first thing you talked about was the silos and also working within a budget. So could you just expand on that a little bit for me? Because, you know, that is definitely a concern. I'm sure you maybe you heard me ask before or Commissioner Farhi ask. You know, we don't want to have a plan that is so beautiful and amazing, certainly, I'm sure, but one that is not implementable just because, you know, either, you know, constraints are what we can do or. So how do you guys do that? And then talk to me about the silos. And I have a question on that, too.
Sure. So comprehensive plan, I'll I'll answer your question first, the 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 silos. Comprehensive plans, they have certain elements that need to be addressed to make them legal. They have land use, they have circulation, they have economic revitalization, sort preservation. sort preservation, and housing. And generally speaking, what plans did in the past was they would go through each silo and talk about it. And what you would have is, let me back up, actually. I can show you the, um, that little diagram that I had. That what they do is, is you go through each element in pretty much copious detail. You go, look at logistic conditions, problems, visions, concepts, and if you have time to implementation. And that really gets you a lot of kind of vague recommendations for these different silos. And then also kind of downplays the interplay between these things. You can't talk about transportation without talking about land, without talking about land use. Or housing without talking about land use. Economic revitalization and not transportation. I mean, they, they all relate to each other. So, what we, we try to do for this is identify and pinpoint five or six specific issues. And they will tell you, if you do a comp plan and you accomplish five things, that's a win. So, we try to say, okay, what are those five things? Off the bat, forget the silos. What are those five big things? And what silos do they cover? If, for example, if you're talking about revitalizing Garrett Hill neighborhood, for example, what do you have to worry about? What, you know, is, what land use do, do, do you have there? What's transportation network like there? What's parking like there? And you can cover a lot of the different silos per issue. So, as far as the budget for the comp plan itself goes, that generally allows you to really drill down on, on some of those things and spend your budget where people want you to spend your budget. You're able to spend your budget on those five or six specific things. You can list 10 more if you have them. But those are the five things you really want to focus on. And as far as the economics, did you mean economics for implementation or economics for the budget for the plan?
So, I think implementation, because you talked about, you know, working within a budget. Were, were you referring to working within the budget for the plan? Or were you talking about working within a budget moving forward with implementation?
I'd say both. I mean, I, I think I addressed working within the budget for the plan. But when we bring, why we brought on Todd and Dana, actually. Dana's our commercial practice leader, and Todd is our economics advisor. You got to be able to pay for what you want to do, or, or assess what, what the impact of a certain change will be, especially with commercial market and the way it is. We want to bring in somebody who knows the market from both sides, so he can present both, both sides, and somebody who knows economics. And Todd has done these kinds of economic analyses for municipalities throughout the Commonwealth.
And so, how do you determine what issues rise to the top when it comes to these, you know, silos? What if, you know, you're meeting with, you know, we cover all of our communication or our community engagement and all that, and everything that rises to the top is transportation? Is, do you go in that way? Or how do you determine?
What you do is, is first of all, you talk, you talk to the community, figure out what's most important to them. Then what you do, one thing that, that we do, I think, a little different, we didn't look to what is implementable, what's possible to do. I'll give you an example, actually. One time I was, I was working on a comprehensive plan for any municipality. It's, we have a $40 million roadway plan that we want to be at the front and center of our transportation parks. And I'm like, okay, $40 million. Like, do you have $40 million? No. Do you have a plan to get $40 million? No. Are you going to raise taxes? No. It's on the tip. It was, but now it's not anymore. So, I said, okay, take this, you know, take that nugget, we'll, we'll put it in there, but kind of at the back. It's not going to be one of, one, one, one of our top issues. We want to do things that are implementable. And, and you, we can do big things. But if you're familiar with Mary Kay, the fashion entrepreneur, she once said, "How do you eat an elephant?" I answered, "One bite at a time." So, you want it, so if you're going to do something, you want to really focus on what can be done in the short term towards that longer-term goal. So, as far as the econo, and, and, and so that's, I guess, part of the answer. As far as the economics goes, um, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, as far as the prioritization goes. So, it's public, so, 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 so it's public input, it is, is, is the ability to implement. And one thing that I've also been doing is, um, we did this actually for the previous plan, I mentioned, eastern Delaware County. We actually came up with a pri, with, with a prioritization for different aspects. In this case, it was connectivity, it was safety, it was equity, and it was, one more, I forgot which one. But we, we actually approached this meeting and said, what of these themes most important to you? We talked to stakeholders and said, would, you know, what is equity most important? Is connectivity most important? What do you feel we should prioritize these issues on? And then you come up with a ranking for the, um, public opinion, the implement, and, um, the, the, the need, if you will, based on this criteria. So, that's one way of doing it. I mean, oftentimes, people just say, take public input, use that. We don't want to do that usually, because that, that often can lead to things that are unrealistic or that don't reflect the, the whole community's voice, just the ones who are the loudest. So, we usually try to get a, get a different, a few sets of criteria, and that usually allows the biggest issues that have the need, the ability to fix, and public support percolate to the top.
So, from you, we're going to get something that's, we're going to get a combination of immediately implementationable, if that's a word. Does that work? Just making it work. Immediately being able to be implemented, and then also aspirational, something aspirational as well, which we can decide, I guess, moving forward.
And hopefully, those will build upon the earlier stuff.
Okay. So, and, and I'm just, want to focus on this, um, this Lansdowne Avenue example that you provided here. And I've seen this, and it, it is really a 10,000 time improvement to that area, I will say. And I liked the way, so if I'm understanding correctly, you guys were able to understand that there was work that was already planned to be done there. You were able to work with, I'm going to assume Lansdowne Avenue, a PennDOT road? I don't, I don't know if it's a PennDOT road. So, you were able to, you know, work with PennDOT, the state, to implement some of the things that were coming out of the meetings that you were having and tag into an already planned project, to do something immediate.
Pretty much, yeah. I mean, they had, I mean, this was, this is early in the planning process, but Lansdowne Avenue is kind of understood to be, this will be an issue. This will be an area we want to look at. And PennDOT actually had waited a year because of COVID to repave it. So, we knew it was on, it was on the table, but they hadn't gone to the community for over a year because of COVID. So, brought everybody into the same room. And yes, PennDOT then agreed to do it, as long as municipality agrees to maintain a few things. So...
And then one last question, because I don't want to monopolize time. But I'll just ask you the same question I asked the prior group, the ordinances. So, when we look at our ordinances, how will you work with us to make recommendations as to what can be changed? And how will you help us with implementation of, of things like that?
One thing I'll say first of all, is that we are partners for, for, uh, the General Code?
John Steinmetz again. Great question, Lisa. A couple of things. I'm, I'm a self-professed zoning geek. So, we've looked at literally dozens, oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Sorry about that. Yeah, okay. Sorry about that. No, John Steinmetz. I'm a self-professed zoning geek. So, as far as ordinances, one of the things we will do is essentially do an audit of your code. Not a detailed audit, as if we were updating the code in its entirety, but we will look at the principles, the themes, the general priorities that come out during the planning process, and then look at your code and say, look, if your code actually is in contradiction or in conflict with these ideas, it's in support of these ideas. And it might be ambiguous, which is pretty common in codes, too, on certain new emerging trends or new emerging values. Maybe the code is silent on those. So, we'll identify those and articulate, articulate those recommendations in the plan. And depending on how the community would most benefit from us presenting that information, we can present it in either chronologically, we can present it as the most bang for the buck. I mean, these are the top 10, 15 things you really want to do with your code to align it with the plan. But we'll work through that process, you know, with the committee and, you know, with the staff and leaders of, of the community.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, the one thing you had mentioned, too, we have a partnership with General Code Publishing that does your code. So, they're a partner with Bergman and C E D. So, we work with them all over the country. So, anything we do will be seamlessly integratable, if that's a word, in, into your code when the time comes.
And John's zoning geek, that just kind of was my point earlier about that. We, we have people who have a lot of depth of knowledge, like zoning codes, I know them. I've read them before. I've written a couple. Not my, okay. We have people, though, who live and eat that, you know, live and breathe that. So, so we, we, we have that ability to kind of bring out different aspects of the planning process.
Thanks very much. Commissioner Jones, I'm going to kick, I'm going to ask you again. Are you want to, okay. Commissioner Farhi?
Um, I'm, I'm fine. You, you should.
Um, I'm going to probably go through a bunch of questions. Timeline, it's in your packet, but can you speak to the timeline for us, please?
Generally speaking, for comprehensive planning, it's probably about a year to 15 months usually. You want to start out with public outreach. You want to get, you know, you want to do public outreach usually during, um, during the fall, if you will, because that is the time when people get back in school, people are back from their summer vacations, if you will, and they're getting back into kind of the groove of things. I mean, there's, there's summer malaise, if you will, and then you get back into the whole, and also importantly for Radnor, as when colleges are back in session, as when Nova, as when Nova's back in session, Havreford, all those, you know, all the, all the university universities are back in session, outreach to the colleges is going to be, is going to be important. You know, especially talking about some of the future plans. Bill Nova, obviously, you know, has done, graduated from there in 2005, and I go back from now, it's a whole different school. I mean, it's just, it's just incredible. So, 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 so you want to do it usually around that time. So, 15 months usually, I'd probably say, is a fair assessment.
Um, and I'd like to dive in a little bit more about your engagement plan. Can you walk us through what that looks like, how you engage? And, um, yeah, just start with that, and I'll do some follow-up behind.
Sure, sure. And what we do, like I said before, we rarely come up with a cut-and-dry plan, especially what to do. We give you a series of options and figure out what works best. Now, just from knowing the, the area, you know, one thing that works great are pop-up events. They work for Eastern Delco, they work in Havreford County all the time. I've, you know, we, we have tons of events and go to those, and it brings in people who we, we not know what things is going on. Often, people come in and say, I had no ideas this is happening. These, these are where you meet people, like, you know, often at, at these events, farmers' markets, community events, there's those, those kinds of things. I think that's a very important component. Surveys online, especially ones that have Q R codes, people can use their phones and just click on it and take the surveys while they're on, while they're riding the train in to, 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 to the city. Those are a great option. We will probably, you know, obviously, we probably, we will have one or two traditional public meetings. I find those to be often not that impactful unless you really get out there and advertise them. And that's the purpose of pop-ups of the, of, of, you know, surveys on Q R. You guys have a newsletter, you put it out in there. And, and, you know, it's different for each community. We did a plan one time in a rural area. We, we said, oh, well, we'll do three meetings. We'll have all this kind of, they said, don't do any of that. Just give us the information, we'll get it out. We're like, okay, whatever. We have to have a meeting. We're going to, we're going to have one, but we gave them the information. It's probably 30 to 40% from the community. They just, they knew what to do. They went out there and did it. We're doing a plan right now for the city of Lancaster. They are going to every single neighborhood. If we give them a budget, we said, we'll help you with, with some of this stuff, but what you think works best? They want to go to every single neighborhood and talk to pretty much every person in the city. And they're doing a good job out of it, too, by the way. But, um, that, you know, we like to look at, at what works best. So, for Radnor, like I said, pop-up events will be big. I think you could probably get a few communities with meeting in the boxes, whether it's public complexes or whether it's...
Can you explain meeting in a box? You've said that a couple of times, and I just couldn't figure out what you were talking about.
No problem. And, and I didn't want to spend a lot of time, you know, five minutes on presentation, but meeting in a box is basically you give somebody who's a neighborhood community leader, whether it's their, they're a member of a civic organization, church group, whatever, give them a list of materials, and it comes with instructions of here's how to conduct a public meeting. At your next meeting, take a half hour, run through these questions. Maybe we give them, you know, a, a, you know, you give them some questions, you give them feedback forms, kind of what, you know, talk about what a comprehensive plan is. And they talk to their, to, to their group during a regularly scheduled meeting and run a public meeting.
Are you present for those? Are you present to guide those? Or you literally hand them off?
Hand them off. And you give them a very detailed set of instructions, however. It's, it's, there's, there's, there's a lot to it. I, I don't want to get too, too far into the weeds, but John, if you wanted to...
No, I, I think you answered the meeting in a box thing perfectly. Just some things, some lessons learned over decades of doing this that we try to bring to bear on all of our projects is with public engagement specifically, a couple of things is, is one, be flexible and be willing to pivot. You know, even the best laid plans in the beginning, like we've got a general idea. When I say we, the collective we, the client, us, all of us, Todd, the whole, all three. So, we say, look, we didn't get a lot of traction, and we didn't get as much traction as we thought with these tools in the beginning. What can we do better? So, we're really comfortable pivoting, and I, I call it people mining. You know, sometimes it takes a while to get to the right people, to get the momentum and the enthusiasm that you need for a successful implementation, uh, plan. Give you a quick scenario. I did a project years ago for the city of Sharon in western Pennsylvania. And the first round of outreach was okay. But, um, and it was, it was also with Hermitage. So, the Hermitage folks came out in droves. The Sharon folks, not so much. So, it took, it took a while. We regrouped twice. We finally tapped into the faith community and the religious community, and then the turnout became extensive. So, we're very stubborn when it comes to public engagement. If, you know, if it, the first round doesn't get the result that we're happy with and the community's happy with, we're going to regroup and do it, maybe not do it again the same way, but we're going to be smarter, and we'll keep going at it with your help to make sure we get those underserved and underrepresented folks and to get the momentum we need.
I'll give you an example, actually. So, I, I give you an example of how we did that for an ongoing plan. I, I'll go back to the city of Lancaster. We had public meetings. We had a virtual public meeting during COVID, regular one, and some events, pop-up events. The meetings were, were, they were okay. They weren't, they weren't great. The pop-up events were amazing. People were everywhere. People were giving us like free pretzels because we're having a party out there. I mean, it, it, they turned out extremely well. So, that, so that's why, like I said, now the city is going to each neighborhood to try to replicate that in every part of the city. So, and we, we help them with that. We give them materials. We're giving them information that they need. Obviously, there's a budget. But we do pivot and go and focus in budget on, you know, it focuses a budget on what works going through the plan.
And I forget what it was that you said earlier, but it, it's, um, made me write down. How do you manage public expectation? So, I know that you said, you know, you gather information, and there might be, you know, some folks have very, very strong opinions, but it doesn't rise in our prioritization or something like that. So, how do you describe to the community what the process is, what you're, um, engage, you know, how to engage? And then, you know, what if somebody feels that they weren't listened to because nothing they said ever comes back up?
So, I want to give you a great example. When I do, and usually for comprehensive plans, we do a market analysis, which helps set, you know, sets the table for what we want to think about in terms of land uses, right? There are consultants who will walk in a room and will say, give me all your dreams. Tell me what you really want to, you know, what you'd really like to see, you know, Taj Mahal or whatever. And that's just setting people's expectations up to ultimately be dashed, right? So, the best way to do this, and it doesn't just apply to market analysis, but particularly for when we come in and are trying to, you know, get people to, to dream within reality, is, here's the box, right? And within this box is the reality of what is possible from a land use standpoint, that is market receptive and probably ultimately financially feasible, right? Or is doable from an infrastructure standpoint because it supports what the market can respond to, right? So, it's educating people upfront about what is realistic so that they have the expectations that can meet reality, and they're not disappointed down the road.
And that's why we brought Todd in, because he's, he's nervous guy. And actually, just to play up a little bit, one, one time what we did, we did this, um, plan where you give people a certain amount of dollars. Here's five bucks. There's 10 bins over there about different options, different, uh, issues. Pick five. And then it makes people really think, like, okay, what, what's important to me? And that gives you a very, very good and measurable, um, you know, view of how people want to spend their dollars.
Um, so, staying on community engagement, who leads? Who's your, who's the team member that leads the community through it?
I'll be the P M.
Okay.
Through that.
So, you do, you do all of the meetings? You do the pop-ups?
I'll be there. I mean, I'll be all the meetings, obviously. I'll be at stakeholder meetings, community meetings.
But you facilitate the conversations? That's on you?
Yeah. And then we'll bring in other people, too, obviously. I'll, I'll, you know, who, you know, meet, whoever the meeting's with, we'll identify appropriate staff and bring them in. But yeah, I mean, I'm 10 minutes away. I'll show up. If there's a community meeting one night that gets scheduled kind of short-handed, not, you know, not a problem. It's not just about geography. But, um, I think it's, you know, it's important to, that, that, that we, I think, attend all of those or have some, you know, and, and I'll probably be, I'll be, I'll be the one probably who goes to most of them, at least.
Okay. So, I guess I'm asking not, are you going to attend them? But who is leading them? Who calls the meeting? Who plans the meeting? Who sets up the agenda? Who facilitates the conversation? I mean, it's a talent to run a room, right? So, who, who's the guy that runs the room?
It depends on, well, first of all, it depends on the kind of meeting. For a public meeting, um, probably facilitate, if you have a facilitator, for, for, for example, I probably would, would be doing it. If it's talking to a group of businesses, might bring Dana in, since she knows the business community and the commercial market. But yeah, I mean, it's pop-up events. But, yeah, I mean, it's pop-up events, it's kind of a, more of a round robin, you know? Everybody who's there knows about the plan, understands the plan and would be able to help walk people through it. It's an open house, then you set up different stations perhaps of different identified issues and have somebody who specializes in those at those different stations. So, we, I wish I could give you an answer of like, one person will be the, will be the facilitator of everything. Hard to do. We will also have people who you recognize in those meetings though. We're a fairly, fairly large firm, but we have a pretty small, um, group of planners who all work pretty well together. So, these lack my your faces.
Great. Um, I think I have, uh, yeah, so, um, when you're doing your research engaging the community, um, you know, I asked the other group this, is that, um, how do you learn where we came from? So, you know, people have, you know, in our community have strong feelings about, you know, growing up here, been here their whole life, what they love about it, those sorts of things. How do you learn that? I mean, you can, you can walk in and see where we are today, but how do you learn where we were ten, twenty years ago? Because in my opinion, I think it's an important aspect to understand to take us from today to tomorrow. So, how does that work?
Personally, I've lived here twenty-two years. I actually, my first, uh, when I first moved into the city, I actually moved to Radnor. I was in American Apartments for, for, for a while. But really, the, the best way you can know people, people have come from, you have to talk to them. And, but more, but more, but more importantly, you have to listen to them. You don't want to talk, I, I, I hate doing meetings where, where you just talk to people the whole time. You have to, you have to engage them because a lot of times people aren't going to come up there and tell you their life story. They're, they're, they're going to go up there and tell you what they want and maybe based on where they came from. But why can't it feel like it was when I was here? You know, why can't this be like it was when it was, you know, you know, back in two thousand or nineteen ninety, whenever it was? That's how you learn about where people have come from. And also with experience, you know? Um, we've all, I mean, Todd has been here also, I think, for quite a long time now in the tri-state area. Yeah. John?
No, I think you nailed it. I think part of it comes from listening to the public events, but also listening in stakeholder meetings and things of that nature because in smaller, more intimate settings, people tend to tell you some of their, their grudges or some of the things that didn't go so well. We did a project with two downtowns that I didn't realize, uh, having not grown up down there, that the county seat was moved a hundred and twenty-five years ago from one village to the other and they're still angry about it. So, some, things of that nature are, um, revealed, I think, in more intimate settings and then I think you need to respect those and use those for the next twenty conversations. So, if you get this little nugget and this, "Hey, Mara, we heard this thing the other night, is this true? What's the history behind that? Why are, are people still upset about that issue? And let us know that," you know? So, I think that's the situation where, and again, David hit it on the head, you listen first and then you take that and that becomes a basis for future questions when that little alarm goes off in your head. This is important and we gotta, we gotta pare this out a little bit more.
I'm telling you, Upper Darby still has some strong feelings about the county seat thing moved to media. That was, that was done a hundred and seventy years ago, but there's still some, and even before that, the big Sears building, that was in Millburn. Went to Upper Darby, lost half of their, their tax base, had the highest taxes in the county, I think, for, for, for years. A lot of that stuff has, has happened. Delaware County actually has a very fascinating history. I, I, I was looking at the municipal map and look at different borders and how the, they're based on different like land formations that, that are no longer there or, you know, they have streams now that, you know, have meandered throughout the course of time. It's, 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 it's fascinating, the history of our area, of the, of the world.
Excellent, thank you. And I have one last question, which is, um, how do you, how do you engage with our staff and, and board, but mostly staff? How do you work together?
Best way is what we do is when we form our, our, our various oversight committees, we have a, we have our, our project team, which is, which is mostly, you know, us, but then we have a, a very close steering committee. And that is, that is literally people who'll be working with to perform the plan and implement the plan and help to organize certain events in the plan, public events and so forth. Then you have a larger box, which is the stakeholders. And that's a larger kind of group of people. But the steering committee is with, with the staff and consultants, that is where you really get together. It's usually about, uh, five or six people. It's a very small group, intimate group, and that is, those are the ones who are cranking the, the machine, doing, doing the work. We get input from everybody in the stakeholder group. And in case of Radnor, we may even have to have a couple of different buckets of, of that. We'll want the, 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 the board involved and a lot of the higher level, um, you know, decisions and we'll want additional level maybe of like some of the outside, not outside group, but, but some of the groups like, like Villanova, uh, the, the Chamber of Commerce, you know, those kinds of groups would be the, kind of the, the, the more stakeholder group. And we probably have a couple of different groups who'll be working within there. Steering committee though will be the ones who handle most of the work with close, um, advising from the board commissioners and, and other staff in township. So, yeah.
And, and to circle back to what was said in the beginning of the conversation with our firm introduction, we have specialists in nearly every field. So, if an issue comes up with zoning or code at any point in the process, but I'm thinking when we're developing recommendations, um, you know, David can say, "John, can you and your zoning geek friends talk to the code enforcement officer or the ZBA chair about this or that?" Of course, if it's an infrastructure issue, water, sewer, roads, whatever the case may be, uh, if it's beneficial to the process and the, and the product to interface staff with the specialists in our firm, we've got to be able to do that across the board.
Actually, yeah, and actually, that's a good point. We, we are doing that for one of our comprehensive plans we're doing right now. We have, uh, one of John's zoning geek friends, there Molly, is, uh, gonna be the one who basically talks to people about zoning. And so, we, we'll, we'll bring in specialists, we'll see a few new faces, but generally speaking, and we'll see the people who you see in front of you.
Excellent. I think that's, I'm done with my questions. Commissioner Farley, do you want to jump in?
I'm fine.
Okay.
Don't worry.
Commissioner, Jack?
I guess my only question is, um, getting back to the community engagement, um, you had proposed a certain amount of, um, you know, sessions of community engagement. I mean, realistically, how many of, of those sessions do we need? Because you also talked about, um, you know, add-ons. And, and so, so basically, when you work with a township of our size and if you can compare it to a township that you've, uh, worked with in the past, how much over that portion of the budget did a township have to go?
Well, you don't want to over outreach because there is a, a level of fatigue eventually. People say, "I've math practiced ten times already." You know, I, I, let's, let's, let's move on then, actually. A township of, of, uh, Radnor's size, um, Radnor is, is a pretty diverse township. It's a lot of different kind of nodes and, 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 and crannies in it. I think the budget that, that we put in there, I don't remember what it is, it tapped my head, is pretty fair. Um, that would cover probably about, um, you know, two or three regularly scheduled, like, you know, open, you know, open house style public events, um, in addition to one or two presentations in front of the board, maybe one pop-up event. I, I believe one or, one, one or two, and then usually a series, a series of, of two serviced. Additional things that, that we could do, which we have done in the past, is go to the school board, for example, and talk to them and, and say, "Hey, you have a Wednesday email or a Wednesday take-home event or a Wednesday take-home packet, could you put this survey in there and have people fill it out?" For Easton Delco, we actually have a survey with kids. Unfortunately, we gave it to them in June when they already checked out and got like twelve back, but I mean, to, you know, you want to reach out to, to people in that, in that way as well. What we have in there, um, is, I, I think is, is a, is a good public outreach plan. We don't want to go too far. We don't want to, you know, give you a, a, a budget that would, you know, freak people out. But if you do want sort of an à la carte idea of what each meeting would be, typically a public meeting is, um, I mean, I won't give you a price, but typically, you know, additional, additional outreach events be, um, for, for meeting, a couple of thousand dollars usually. Surveys, maybe around the same, not, you know, give or take depending on the, on, on, on level of it. But we have done work in live townships that, that are similar in size and, and, and character to Radnor. We're actually talking about that, well, we didn't really see one, about, about other towns that we've worked in that are, that, that are similar, relatively affluent, have some identified commercial nodes, but, you know, also has its share of unique issues to, uh, to, to, to talk about. So, I hope to answer your question to a degree. It's, yeah. It's, it's, and, and of course, if there are other, you know, if, 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 if there's a, if there's a feeling that, that we need to do more outreach, as, as John said, we're flexible. And say, "Okay, this, you know, pop-up event worked well, but let's do it again in lieu of a public meeting." Or let's talk about, you know, adding into the budget and figure something else. We can always horse trade. We do, we do, as planners, we do a horse trading with, with different parts of a scope software. So, we certainly can, can do that.
Excellent. Well, I think we're at time. Uh, really do appreciate all of you being here and presenting. Gave us a lot of information and, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Look forward to hearing back from you guys. Should I just delete the one on here or just leave it on there for you guys? The presentation?
Did you give me an electronic copy or can you email me an electronic copy? Thank you.
So, we'll be, we will be posting your presentation on our website for those who are watching at home if they want to, um, take a look at it. Thank you so much.
Just, um, really quick, Kevin, did we also talk about having the, um, did we talk about having it available at, in case people wanted to come in and see things?
We have three hard copies of each proposal on the back table. And those will be available, uh, at the permit window for any public that wants to come up and take a look at those.
Perfect. Great. Thank you.
Okay, so we have the, uh, technology all lined up. We, um, thank you for being here. This is Michael Baker International. Um, as you heard, we're gonna give you twenty minutes to go through your slide deck and then we'll have twenty-five minutes to, um, take some questions and have a discussion. So, start whenever you're ready.
Wonderful. Well, good evening. It's wonderful to see some of you again. Um, my name is Hannah Clark. I am a senior planner and project manager with Michael Baker International. We are a firm of over three thousand employees with office, over ninety offices across the U.S. And we are so excited to be partnering with Connect the Dots, a woman-owned DBE firm out of Philadelphia that specializes in public engagement. Our teams together are really going to bring you that engagement forward plan that is bold, but also implementable and realistic. And we can't wait to talk to you a bit more about that tonight. First, I'm gonna have my colleagues introduce themselves. So, Peter?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Peter Quintanilla. I'm the lead for the Urban Design Studio of Michael Baker. Um, a little bit about my background, I graduated from the University of Miami School of Architecture, but I've been working for a firm called Rainy Plater Ziber. They have done a lot of the form-based code and, and, and smart code, so, you know, that, I have that in my history. But now I'm here in, um, for Michael Baker and we're doing, um, all sorts of different fund projects and showing some technology that we love to incorporate into our work.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Chris Stanford. I'm a professional engineer and a certified planner. I have over twenty-eight years of experience working with municipalities all over Pennsylvania on, uh, land development reviews and, uh, planning and lots of active transportation projects. So, uh, glad to be here tonight. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Roseanne Lubek. I'm with Connect the Dots. We're a public engagement firm. Like Hannah said, we're based here in Philadelphia and I am also a planner. Um, before I became a planner, I had a ten-year career in public relations. So, I sit right at that intersection of public relations, marketing and communications and planning. And I work to bring all of these things together into the public, um, so that they're able to bring their expertise into our process as well. Thank you. So, that gives you a sense of some of our core team members. And on the next slide, and we do apologize for the slight discoloration.
It's probably our gear. We're upgrading.
We do have some copies that include the majority of slides, but we will be doing a live sketching exercise. So, anyway, um, apologies for this, but let's keep moving. Uh, so our team is made up of certified planners, engineers, urban designers, engagement specialists, GIS mapping specialists. So, our team of Michael Baker and Connect the Dots really brings you a full service firm. Um, you're getting from the planning to design to the actual implementation, designing, construction. And we often work together. So, this is a team that we have worked together on multiple comm plans. We're doing multiple zoning, S Aldo and official map updates. We love working together. We have a really good time. And, um, it means that you're going to get a very coordinated and collaborative team. Myself, I've been, I, I've been leading comprehensive plans for over the past twelve years. I worked previously for the city of Allentown, leading their comprehensive plan, which was a great effort in community collaboration and engagement. And I'm very excited about the opportunity here at Radnor. So, we feel that Radnor is at a very exciting point. And it was said at the opening remarks of tonight's, um, presentations that you want to do this right. And we want to help you do that right. And we want to help you build a legacy for the township. Comprehensive plans are that. They are an investment plan. They give you short, medium and long-term options and implementation actions and can really be a transformation for our community. And something that we've observed in the communities we work in over the past few years is people are ready and open for change. So, what does that mean? It might mean a zoning change. It might mean adding a bike lane. It might mean adding a parklet. But what we really want to do is collaborate and think about what this could mean for the community. We also put everyone, put the people and community first. We want to work alongside the community, work together, provide tools, which you'll get a little taste of with Peter, of really collaborating together. We also want to emphasize that this is an opportunity to leverage the moment. You're well aware of the infrastructure bill. Uh, at the state level, lots of grant funding is coming through. And we want to position Radnor to be able to take advantage of that funding. And that starts in, in that, in a large part with your comprehensive plan. So, if the comprehensive plan has that implementable vision, which we will work towards and give you the tools to identify the projects and how to get them done and how to fund and partner, uh, this will really be a document that will allow you to leverage and take advantage of this once-in-a-generation opportunity with federal funding. And finally, this is about Radnor and the place. And we have gotten to know Radnor. We are enamored with your township. It is so fun. We were in the library practicing our presentation before. So, um, we, we're just, we're really excited to continue to learn and get to know folks here. So, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the process through the context of public engagement. Um, so, we have recognized that you have a lot of audiences that you would want to involve in your comprehensive plan. That's everyone from the township right down to your most vulnerable community members.
We want to make sure have a specific outreach done in an accessible and easy way that will lower a lot of barriers. So thinking about that, we like to start our projects at Connect the Dots with a process that we call the existing conditions of engagement. Just like an engineering firm would be doing existing conditions on a roadway, we're going to look at what the processes and committees and ways are that you do your outreach now. And we'll try to find some efficiencies within that. Planning fatigue is a real concern. Survey fatigue. I've been, I've talked to so many communities, they're like, I never want to take another survey. First of all, don't make it feel like a test. That's my number one. Use bright colors, use pictures, make it something accessible. But also making sure that if I'm doing a survey, I'm not doing it after we've just done three other surveys. I'm aligning that in there. We are actually doing a survey in our public engagement plan that we've outlined for you because they are really useful tools for talking to a lot of people in a way that's like an inch deep and a mile wide. You can talk about a lot of different items in a survey like that and it's really, you can get a lot of input. So I always pick our tools and the way that we lay out our engagement plan based off of the depth of conversation that I need to have at that moment. Surveys are really useful at the beginning where you don't need to do a lot of education. You know, you can just walk right up, ask a couple of questions. How do you use this space? What do you want this space to be? You don't need any specialized knowledge to be able to take a survey. And it's really easy to promote that survey with a pop-up because if I'm doing a pop-up, I have like a one to five-minute interaction with someone. They're in-between places. If I'm doing a pop-up at a transit center, I've got like five minutes maybe. So when I'm designing a pop-up, I do one minute, I do five minutes, and I do 15-minute interactions. We're also going to be doing focus groups where you can really dig deep and get into the details of things like that. And that's something that we have in there. And those can be compensated so that we're really incentivizing the voices that might be missing from the process. We are also looking at doing these workshops, which we are going to talk about shortly, which are going to really build the bridge between all of these different audiences and the planned components that you're going to need to see, from land use and housing to infrastructure and environment. And I want to be respectful of my teammates' time, but please ask me more questions about it after.
Thank you, Roseanne. So we wanted to reintroduce, and apologies for the quality here, but when we came in front of the steering committee, we did a visioning exercise, which is something we would want to integrate into the work that we do across the community in the workshops. And so we chose one of your very vibrant business districts, downtown Wayne. And Peter's going to, he can follow along on the iPad. And we started to say, all right, what are some, how can we begin to build these bridges between the different comm plan components? How can we begin to think about, do you want me to pause?
Yeah, I'll let you have all the time. You, we're dealing with a tech issue that because you're using an iPad, we're not broadcasting your presentation.
Okay. We apologize. We did double check about the iPad.
Yeah, I think, hang on just one second. Hold tight.
Thank you so much for helping to troubleshoot. Peter was going to bring his own projector just in case something was wonky.
We are literally a month away from redoing this whole room and we're super excited about it, but not quite in time to have you present. So we'll just take a minute. I'd like to get the best quality that we can. And I'm sure you checked and we just didn't realize what was going to, the challenges.
He didn't want to, he's our visual effects person in addition to many other things.
That's okay. I just apologize that we're sort of interrupting your flow, but we will get all of the information in.
We really do appreciate you working with us to help resolve.
What's that? I think we're checking.
Would it count against our time if I asked you all a question while we're waiting? One thing that I always, my opening question whenever I'm working with a community is what do you love about this place? So if you don't mind telling us, what do you love about Radnor?
I guess I'll go first. I love the fact that it's a walk, you know, most of Radnor has walkability. So getting, being able to access stores and restaurants on foot or bike is really an endearing aspect of our community.
I guess.
The engineer is excited by that answer?
Yeah. So I live on the other side of Radnor, which isn't as walkable. But the thing that I think is unique about that, the other side of town, I guess, is, you know, the beauty, our tree canopies. We've worked really hard over the years to preserve open space, which I think is really important. And I think the history of our community, we have so many people who are longtime residents. You know, I know my parents have lived here for 45 years. So, you know, people, and we have many people like that. So people come here, they settle here, and they stay. So that's why I like it.
I think we'll ask the next two of you after because it looks like we're ready to keep going.
Just, we can pivot easily.
Pivoting, exactly. Nimble.
Thank you so much for working with us on this. It will be worth it, we promise. So when we came to meet with the steering committee, I know some, that some of you may remember this, we walked through something we do in our visioning workshops, which are ways of thinking about the place you're in and what could different improvements or enhancements look like. So we started with in downtown Wayne, Link Hester Avenue, place everyone knows well. And then as we went into workshop, we began to add some of those components that the comprehensive plan could help foster, whether it's an enhanced streetscape, more compact parking to allow for better movement on the sidewalks, creating public gathering areas, bringing a more, a mix of uses through a varied land use and zoning update. So this is something we, when we talk to community members, we want to make it accessible. We want to make it visual. We want to make it understandable to their place and what they know. And they can tell us, yeah, I don't really like this, or yeah, what are the steps we'd want to see for this to become a reality? And then sometimes with our, our team, we like to add in our learning and experience from other places and we take it a step further in terms of a bold vision, which here we have a center aisle with parking, stormwater infiltration, lots more vegetation. And it also creates a third space because you can close the street, you can put farmer's markets there. How wonderful would it be to have a space that has so many uses, but also would slow down traffic in this area? So just an idea we want to remind people of and throw out. So now we're going to do it again, but we're going to do it in Garrett Hill. And Peter's going to walk you through some of the sketching.
Okay. I can't move the iPad, but I'm going to try to talk like this. So one of the things that I like to, I like to start, you know, whenever we are doing this conversation is, is that, you know, to create transformation, everybody needs to understand and to build trust. Oh, that also works too. Great, thank you. Can you hear me? Okay, perfect. So one of the things, like I said, is that everybody needs to understand and be able to build trust. You know, one of the things that I learned very quickly when I was working for my previous employer is that a lot of people don't know how to read maps. They don't understand maps. They don't understand maps, but also they, because like, you know, like Roseanne just said, you know, there's also that fatigue of like writing the little notepads. I think this should be right. I think this should be better. I think that sidewalk, oh, I want to show you that sidewalk, but I just can't because it's so tiny on the 24 by 36 sheet of paper that you print the whole time municipality on, you know? So having, being able to have an opportunity, use technology that actually allows to bring people together and understand and be able to see what the issues are and actually sketch it, is actually very, very powerful. You know, it's not just about, you know, putting, getting people's informations and people's quotes down and then sticky and sticking on a piece of paper. It's actually about having a conversation with them. And that's kind of the things that we like to do in our group. And that's hopefully what we're going to show you. You know, the first thing I think I would like to show you is, is, well, this is, again, this is Garrett Hill. And the first thing I want to talk about is how, you know, the first, you know, looking at it is that it's such a powerful picture when you look at it and all the different micro notes that you have. I mean, this is a small little neighborhood, right, that you have in your community, but actually have four little micro notes, if you will. You have a wonderful green space, fantastic rail station, you know, businesses, and then the great main street. You know, and then if you take it from that perspective, what you realize is that you can start building up on each one of those little pieces and asking people like, what is it that you'd like to see? What is it like, you know, what are some of the things that you would like to change? So this is where, you know, I work with Chris a lot, our, you know, engineer, the yin and the yang. And we start talking about what are the positive and negative with the community. And as an example, and I'm going to switch this off and on so you got, you're able to appreciate, you know, bump outs, right? Which is one of the safety features.
Yeah, again, when we talk to people, we listen to what they tell us, you know, this intersection's not safe. Well, what do you mean? Well, it takes me so long to get across the street and I feel like it's too far and people drive too fast. And then we can listen to that and we can apply our planning expertise or engineering expertise to show them, okay, what if we, you know, put curb extensions here? What if we incorporated shorter crosswalks? What if we, you know, these curb extensions would slow down the traffic? Is that something that you think would work? And you'd like to see here? And then absolutely, people will like, of course, that would be great. We'd love to see that. And then, you know, we can talk about, you know, incorporating green infrastructure, stormwater management to these things as well. Or thinking about maybe, you know, could this be an outside plaza or outside seating for a restaurant that spurs economic activity and generates jobs in the township? So all these things can be, you know, communicated in a really simple sketch and we can, you know, save these things and we can incorporate them into the plan later to kind of communicate these ideas that we've heard from the community.
But you know, that is only one layer, right? I mean, that gives you the safety, but then you also want to activate this really great spaces. So that is where we start thinking about, well, what about, what about the buildings? And then that's when we start having conversations with people because, you know, what's wonderful about our system and our process and our workshop is that we actually tailor them and we make them specific to the small little communities that we're talking to. And so we'll talk a little bit about the number of workshops that we're thinking of doing, but the idea is, is that each one of them, you have, wow, what happened to the buildings? Sorry. Each one of these, you end up, you end up talking to people and finding out what is it that people actually feel comfortable with. Some people are okay with three stories. Other people are not okay with two stories. Other people want more setbacks. Other people want the buildings right on the sidewalk, you know? Those are the kind of things that you start mentioning and talking, but also you start having that relationship and understanding the trade-off that you have whenever you have a building that's very close to a sidewalk and what it actually does, for example, in case of placemaking. You know, having a building closer to the sidewalk, meaning that you could actually have a slightly wider sidewalk than the, just the six feet that you have now, all of a sudden you may have 10 or 12 feet. What can happen there? Well, in this case, if you notice, and I don't know how we're doing with time, and I start going faster the later I go, but, but, you know, in that case, you know, in this case, for example, you could actually have outdoor commercial. Thank you. Outdoor commercial, or, you know, you could actually end up getting outdoor seating areas. Or you could start having, like Chris was saying, you could, you start having some rain gardens or even rooftop terraces or smaller little terraces. But not only that, but what's also important is how do we make all these connections? And we'll send you a JPEG of these, don't worry. But, you know, how do you make these connections, for example, connect with other things that you have right now, like the train station, for example, right?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's such a great resource. We want people to know it's there. We want to improve the connections to it. So we want to enhance, you know, create some gateways to really connect folks and highlight those connections to the Northtown High Speed Line. So again, curb bumps, bump outs, crosswalks, you know, making those entrances is, you know, as necessary and friendly as possible are important.
And not only that, but, you know, sometimes what people, drivers forget is that they're supposed to slow down and they start speeding up as soon as they see, you know, 15 feet of pavement for them to go on faster. So, you know, one of the things that we always try to introduce is more, even more bump outs throughout, you know, throughout the little, throughout the long, especially very long blocks, as an example. But, you know, going back to the conversation about transfer or interdevelopment or TOD, you know, you have right now a very big site that at the moment is businesses, right? But a lot, as we know, facing of businesses are changing, you know, thanks to COVID and everything else. So there we say, and this is part of the conversation that we have with the communities, there we say that maybe some of these businesses or some of those buildings could actually retrofit in time. And you start actually integrating more, more townhouses, for example, that are very close to, very close to the train station, but also very close to the park. And therefore, you're actually having more people that are buying into the shops and actually making more, you know, better for financial and longevity of the businesses. Right, Chris?
Absolutely.
And the value of doing an exercise like this isn't just that it's cool. It is also something that's going to reach a lot of different people with a lot of different learning styles and activity styles. It's visual, but you also get to touch things. You get to see things. You get to immediately understand what it means when we say setback because we show you with the building. And you also have the chance to talk and ask questions and understand. So when we talk about meeting people where they are, it's not just geographically going to a grocery store and talking to people there. It's also that. But it's also meeting people where they are as far as their understanding and making sure that everyone feels like they are able to get engaged in the process, no matter what their innate ability and understanding is. This is drawing. It's something that we can do with all ages and all languages.
So we can always come back to this if, during the Q and A, but I think what we really wanted to communicate here is with the team that we are bringing to you, with the experience we're bringing, we are putting engagement forward first. It is where you, when you look at our budget, we are investing in engagement and that is because it's so important and so foundational to this plan. And that engagement includes the first laying the groundwork, the surveys, the engagement, what used to be called the engagement audit, existing conditions, the focus groups, and then getting into those urban design workshops that we can use as the way to really build that buy-in, build that trust, build that community capacity, empower your neighbors to feel like they have a role in this plan and they will be there with you in implementation. So we are a team that brings, again, we bring a multidisciplinary background, planners, engineers, designers, and you have access to the entirety of Baker. So if you want to really get deep into a stormwater project, we can bring those folks to you. We have folks in the Philly area who work across these communities all the time or with mobility or transit. So we are really here to be a portal to our colleagues and other experts as well. And you're getting a lot of expertise in this team who you'll have consistent access to. We also are really focused on innovating, innovative collaborative tools, as you saw the visioning workshops. Connect the Dots is really building an amazing tool, or set of tools, to ensure that all voices are heard. And it's an iterative process. Finally, we want to bring you bold ideas that are implementable, but also catalytic to spur other change in your community. We know it's important to have short, medium, long-term within this plan and we will be able to put a timeline, a roadmap and a framework for implementation. It's something our team does together all the time. And we do feel that we will be able to really build the foundation through the community engagement work because we will be able to take a variety of tools and show them what it could be, test the waters, and really give you a plan that reflects where the community is today, but also where they want to go. And with that, we are done with our presentation. I do have, if we can just go to the next, sorry, next. I did just want to put this up. It was not in our proposal, so we can speak to this during Q and A as well.
Thank you. With the little intermission that we have there, I think you guys stuck it right to time. So appreciate that. And again, apologies for the tech difficulties, but I like to see how you pivot. We weren't testing you, but you did pass. So I think we'll go for some commissioner questions and Commissioner Farhi, why don't we start with you?
Thanks. Yeah, so very well done. Just a couple, two, two quick points. I know that Lydia was here before. I thought she was wonderful when she spoke. Can you talk on behalf of her? I know that she said she worked for SEPTA. So she knows a lot about the commuter. She is a Philly gal. She's from Philly, which is good. I like it. And you had that great cart. And I, and when you brought it in, I'm like, oh my God, this, and then I'm like, it's a great idea. So if you could speak to those three points, I would appreciate it.
Roseanne can speak to some of those and then we can talk a bit more generally about Lydia's experience. She unfortunately is on vacation or else she would be here.
So the cart is actually ours from Connect the Dots. And that's okay. We also work extensively with SEPTA. We are the public engagement firm for both the comprehensive, I'm sorry, the Regional Rail Master Plan and Bus Revolution, which is the four-year planning process to completely redesign bus service in the entire region. So I work quite a bit with SEPTA. Small plug, we are doing a transit talk for the Regional Rail Master Plan in the end of July. Keep an eye out for that date because I think that you'll probably want to be involved with that. But we understand all of the complexities that are involved in dealing with municipalities and the transit system and making sure that those connections are there. We call ourselves Connect the Dots because we connect the dots between our clients as well as the people that our clients want to serve. So for example, like, I can give you a real thing that we're working on right now. For DVRPC, I'm doing a study on three communities. One is Trenton. They're about to launch the Trenton Bike Plan. So because of the work that I did in Trenton, I was able to leverage relationships that we built, bring it to the bike plan, and they're already having some ideas that were seeded that are going to direct the bike plan before the work even gets done. So we can, we can make that connection between communities and between projects. And we can also do the same thing with, like I said, with SEPTA. I am working with Chester County on something completely unrelated to transit. But Chester County is really excited about the possibility of microtransit because it opens up so many doors for them. So we're able to connect the dots between all of those different public processes that are happening right now. And that's what I'm talking about with the existing conditions of engagement. It's not exclusive just to you. It's everything that we know about from working extensively throughout the Philadelphia region. We have our finger on the pulse of all of the different planning processes that are happening and we can bring that here.
This is how the car This is how the car would look like in the intersection.
Oh, yeah. Now, Peter, do you have a picture of that? Can you pull that up? Do you have a little snapshot of what the?
The picture of the car?
Yeah.
And I think just to speak to Lydia's expertise, um, well, first off, when you talk about the history, Lydia grew up roller skating here in Radnor. So we all, you know, if we're selected, we're definitely going to do something with roller skates. Um, but in all seriousness, Lydia is a leader in the world of transit here in the Philadelphia region. She was with SEPTA for many years. She does a lot of, did a lot of stationary of planning as well as more, um, some of the regional work. And our firm, Michael Baker, similar to Connect the Dots, is very tied into SEPTA and the work that they do. We have folks who sit within SEPTA. We're very aware of their infrastructure projects and where they're headed. So it's definitely a connection that we want to leverage for the communities that we work with and because it is so important here in Radnor, that would be a big piece and Lydia would definitely be a part of that.
Probably a dozen former SEPTA people. Sorry, we have a, sure.
When you're speaking, if you could step to the podium because that's where the camera is.
Um, we have a dozen or more former SEPTA people that have have dozens, decades of experience that are on staff with Baker and, um, you know, help with numerous projects. They run projects as project managers for SEPTA. So again, we're integrated with them. Um, I'm actually an ex-Pendot employee. I used to work here in St. David's back in the day. And again, same thing, we have dozens of folks who, who are past Pendot employees and, uh, we do tons, tons of Pendot work. We actually do more Pendot work than anyone else in the Commonwealth. So again, another agency that we get, we're like integrated with that we can bring our knowledge, uh, to this planning process, whether it's resurfacing programs, whether it's, uh, you know, ongoing infrastructure projects, whatever. Um, so again, between all those different connections, um, we definitely can bring them to bear on, on this plan.
Just, sorry, one, one more and then, uh, because I don't want to monopolize them. Just how that cart kind of, how you use these tools to engage in the community? Cause that was totally outside the box and totally, and that's just what I want the people at home to see and then, uh, I'm done after that.
I'm sorry, I didn't bring the cart back. I just didn't want to go to my office to pick it up. Um, so I always want to make sure that I'm creating an experience that's going to be really memorable. Um, Peter, I don't know if you can find the cart or manage to get it up there, but Peter's going to draw the cart. Um, what we do, so I, I built the cart because we were doing nine pop-ups.
Sorry, having not been in the previous meeting, you keep saying the carts.
I'm going to, I'll describe it. I'll, um, I'll describe it. So I built, we were planning to do for the Regional Rail Master Plan Round One. We were doing all these pop-ups along the rail lines. So I knew that we were going to need to go to nine locations in two days. So a lot of moving around within the system, which isn't handicap accessible in a lot of places. So I needed something that would be easy to maneuver and easy to set up, that wasn't constantly setting up and breaking down tables and was context-specific. So I built a cart, like a snack cart, like you would see on the trains in Asia, and we wheeled it through the trains. Um, it was lightweight enough that I could carry it alone. Um, and our CEO, Marissa, who's even smaller than me, was able to carry it alone. Um, but we were able to bring it through the system and pass out snacks on the, in the system and get people to do the, the surveys that way. Um, it had wheels and it was painted the colors of the, of the system. We had, um, a chalkboard on one side for interaction and then we had posters on the other two sides that announced what it was that we were doing. And rather than having to walk up to people to interact with them, they came to us. I also had a, like, I, I looked at all five senses, right? What are they seeing? What are they smelling? What are they tasting? And we like made sure that everything was there. And then what are they hearing? I made a whole playlist of songs about trains. Like the details were all there. Um, no one cared about my playlist except for me, but I really enjoyed it. So we, we put in that much thought when I'm designing it. And like I said, there's the one minute, the five minute and the 15-minute interaction. So for that one, one minute walk-up, how would you reimagine regional rail? Do you ride the rail? Why don't you ride the rail? And people could answer a couple of really quick questions that our staff were able to capture in a Google form and tally that up. Or they could do a five-minute interaction where we went through like a Mad Lib, where they described their recent regional rail trip or a fictional regional rail trip because they didn't ride and why they didn't. Um, and then we would do a 15-minute interaction where they would do the full survey with us. So we could bring it up on our iPads and, and go through the full online survey. So we were adding in this layer of in-person engagement to an online tool that we had created. And I just did that again with our more recent round where we have three different scenarios. So we had like almost an art exhibit set up inside Jefferson Station where people could go through all of the different scenarios and interact with them that way. That was crafted after, there we go. Uh, that was crafted to match the online experience where if you go to regionallailplan.com, go right in, it asks you four questions, you're matched with a scenario that best suits your needs and then you can get into all of that, that information that's there. So someone walked in, it's like, my train comes in five minutes. And we walked through that whole setup and we did all of the interactions and then she was on her way. But there were other people who spent over an hour reading all of the information on that boards. Our events are scalable so that they meet people at what their level of engagement can really be at that exact moment.
I'm going to do a plug for Roseanne because she's not giving herself enough credit. Um, they have such great creativity. This is just one idea they've done. They've done like a tricycle, you know? Didn't you do a tricycle for another project? She's going to come up with some creative idea for you guys that will generate a lot of buzz for this plan. And that's one of the reasons we love working with her because she sort of thinks that these are outside of the box. Um, and their whole firm really thinks that way. So again, a lot of, we're a little bit, some of us at the Baker world are a little, you know, traditional, but, um, that's why we're getting involved with folks like Roseanne and her firm to, uh, to help, uh, you know, think outside the box.
And Commissioner Borowski, do you have any questions?
Many of my questions have already been addressed, but one thing that I'm interested in learning, what, what are some of Baker's goals when they're working with, with municipalities on sustainability and reducing carbon footprint?
Sure. I can, I can speak to that in, um, a good level of detail. And I think at Baker, one of the areas of our practice that we have that's actually based out of our Philadelphia office is hazard mitigation planning. And I'm sure as commissioners, you are well aware of that process and what it means to adopt a hazard mitigation plan and assess your hazards. And I say that because it's, it's a very foundational way to think, particularly around risks when we think about climate change. And so one of our team members, Rebecca Wetzler, leads all the Pennsylvania hazard mitigation plan updates at the state level as well as the counties. And we bring a toolkit and an understanding of hazards within different communities and can kind of hit the ground running and jump, like, jump ahead because of the deep understanding, particularly of PMA as well as FEMA regulations. And that's, that's only one part. I, I come from an urban resilience background. Before coming to Baker, before the city of Allentown, I worked for an organization called 100 Resilient Cities out of the Rockefeller Foundation. And we worked with communities across the US and Canada to create urban resilience strategies, which have a lot of similarities to comprehensive plans. But it's really about what systems are you thinking about? What are the shocks of the system? Like if there's a major flood or if there's a terrorist attack, but as well as the stresses such as aging infrastructure or structural racism or economic inequality. So our team brings, you know, some of the very technical knowledge as well as some of the kind of systems thinking. And then we can tap into our specialists in resilience from across the company. We have folks who specialize in water and water systems out of our Philly office. A lot of the aspects of transit and mobility, how that relates to sustainability. So, and we also can bring greenhouse gas auditing inventory if that's of interest or at least make recommendations around that. So it's quite a range. Um, but I think foundationally we'd want to obviously, you know, through our engagement, through our initial communications, understand where, you know, the hazard profile of Radnor vulnerabilities and then begin to build out climate adaptation and mitigation goals.
And since they said such nice things about us, I have to say part of why we like working with Michael Baker is there is an expert to answer any question that I have, that I encounter from the public while we're out there. They've, they've got someone for that, who can help give us that answer. Um, and who can help me understand things so that I can translate it to the public in a way that is accessible and understandable because when we're getting to the technicalities of something like hazard mitigation, it's not always the most jazzy conversation, but we can work together um, through the collaboration that we've built to be able to talk about that. We're actually working on a hazard mitigation plan together in public involvement. So we're, we're learning how to speak that language and, and make it something that people can really understand and engage with.
Did that cover your question?
It absolutely did. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I'll be, uh, brief because you have answered a lot of the questions I think that we had asked prior, but, um, one of the things, and while, you know, I, I think the visualizing is great and I think the drawing and all of that is wonderful. Um, you use, do you use that as, so, you know, you're talking with a group and people are talking about setbacks and they're talking about a concern of, you know, we don't want the buildings to be really close to the street or we want them. So you're using that not so much as let's draw like Disney World and, you know, downtown Wayne and what it could look like. Um, you're using it more as a tool to, I guess, visualize the conversation. So if we're talking about, um, again, or, you know, what, uh, added outdoor dining could look like in Wayne or more rooftop dining could look like somewhere. It's more of helping people visualize what it would look like. It's not drawing some things. I, my main concern is making sure that what we end up with is something that is actionable and something that we can actually implement. And I think we talked about this a little bit when we met in, um, you know, in the smaller group. I, you know, I don't want there, the, what comes out of the plan to be something, yes, it's all, uh, you know, dreams and, you know, great things and all of that. Like it needs to be implementable. It can't just sit and we never be able to act on it.
Yeah, no, that's a, thank you so much. That's a very good point. Um, the one thing I would say is, is, um, because what we do with this, with this method of drawing things, it's actually a conversation. And what it is, is actually to unlock in for everybody to understand why is it that we're doing what we're doing? And what we have realized is that by having this conversation with people and drawing and sketching it, number one, everybody feels like they are participating, but number two is, is that you start winning champions. And so at the end of the day, not only is the whole plan implementable, but there are people going outside and saying, you know what? That zoning could actually allow me to do X, Y, Z. Therefore that's the direction that I'm heading. So this is actually the drawing that I, that I did for, for, um, for Lancaster. And it was indeed exactly that conversation is, you know, people that may not like three stories. Well, we could actually have a setback on the third and fourth story, for example. You still allow the density, but then that is where you have your rooftop terrace, you know? And having that conversation with people, it's where people start to understand because the reality is this, everybody wants development to actually happen in their municipality, but then they don't allow the codes to actually allow for development to happen in the municipality, right? But that's because people don't want the density. But really you need the density in order for, make for, you know, easier for develop. So it's a conversation that it needs to be had, you know? And that's why we find that this is a really good tool for that conversation. So it's, yes, we're not saying this is what it's going to look like. What we're saying is this is where we're going to get the DNA for writing, rewriting the zoning or code or anything else that we're doing.
And since you mentioned that, I asked, oh, I'm sorry, did you want to? One thing that's really important that we always do at the start of our projects is something called on and off the table. Before we ever get to this type of exercise, you've already set the parameters with us of what is on the table for discussion, what is absolutely not okay for discussion. And it will get into the details of like, can we have an overall loss of parking spaces in certain areas? I mean, we'll really dig into like, what is a deal breaker for you? Because I know that you do want something that's going to be implementable and we need to make sure that we're getting you to a place where you're comfortable where we can let loose on stuff like this. But we know the boundaries of, of where we can go and we know when the conversation is going off the rails.
And then my last question is the one I've asked others. Uh, and you mentioned the ordinances and things like that. So how do you guys, uh, you know, work with us? Will you review our ordinances? How does that all happen?
So I, I would say that we, we understand that the comprehensive plan will be the basis for any zoning update that you want to do. If you want to do a comprehensive zoning update or do amendments to the current zoning code. So for, the way we approach comprehensive plans is we are thinking at the ordinance level in these broader recommendations. Some recommendations might be strengthen, you know, an action-oriented bullet list about strengthening the stormwater ordinance. But what we really want to do and in, in making this point is, um, zoning is going, zoning is going to be the mechanism for which you can implement the comprehensive plan. So when you have a comprehensive plan that provides a clear vision at that broad, broader level, it would definitely, it definitely is something we encourage communities to consider about how that then relates to either updating the entire ordinance or updating portions of the ordinance to reflect the goals of the comprehensive plan. So they very much speak to one another. So you have this overall framework of the com-plan and then the zoning ordinance is a way to operationalize it.
And you'll work, you work with us still around the, the ordinances and operational?
We will, we will approach the comprehensive plan with a lens of zoning recommendations. And that will also relate to the future land use as well. So when we do the future land use map, we'll want to create something for you that's a roadmap to the zoning ordinance update as well.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I think it's my turn. Um, one, I'd like to bring you to the timeline. So if you can just give us a general sense of how you approach, how long you think it would be?
Yeah. Um, so we are proposing a 14-month timeline for this process. We think that is a very realistic timeline to get this plan done. And we, we do recall from our first interview, it was mentioned about, um, getting some, some things done prior to administrative change or administration changes. So we want to be very sensitive and aware to that. So what, what we have in terms of our timeline, it's by our ta, our key ta, excuse me, key tasks of the, within the plan. So we really envision getting a comprehensive plan update committee or your steering committee set up relatively quickly. And we envision 10 meetings with them between the second and 13th month. So basically from getting it started through final adoption. We also want to emphasize that engagement is throughout everything. It is all 14 months. We really want to, we are putting engagement at the forefront and, and from what we understood about the priorities for the township, that felt like the right thing to do to really have that be continuous and different phases of engagement. We will conduct research and analysis, which is a lot of the baseline data collection in the first two to five months. So we look at the census, we look at your existing plans. We'll put that together to do, excuse me, create a community profile that will inform how we move forward with recommendations. We then will go into the vision statement, issues and development objectives. So that's what forms kind of the skeleton of the plan. We are very much proponents of the implementable plan approach is what we work with and use across the many communities in the Commonwealth as well as across the country. So we do want to take, you know, make those connections between systems. How does transportation affect housing? How does land use affect, um, water quality and environmental management? And then, um, we are draft, we think around, not think, we are proposing around five months for the draft plan. So that will include, um, continuous engagement as well as a lot of close work with the comprehensive plan update committee. And then we do want to be realistic about plan adoption. That can take time. And we also want it to be a robust process that matches the level of engagement that was undertaken during the plan development. So ensure that the community is well aware of the plan, that we will facilitate all the required, um, public meetings and hearings, but also during the 45-day required public comment period, we will ensure that there are a multitude of mechanisms and Roseanne can speak to that in more detail, for folks to provide their comments and to make sure we really have heard and incorporated and people understand what this plan is. Cause ultimately we want it to be a tool that will be able to be implemented no matter who's in office or sitting up here. Um, but people see themselves in the plan. They see the work that they put in and they want to see it implemented. So that gives high-level overview. Happy to answer any questions there.
No, that's, uh, very clear. Um, so talk to me a little bit about, um, I've asked the other groups the same question. Is how, how do you determine about where we came from? Sort of that, the history, people in Radnor are very, you know, this is, this is very connected to the past, um, that's gotten us here today and then we're looking to the future. connected to the past, that's gotten us here today, and then we're looking to the future. So how do you get that knowledge and, you know, apply it to what you're, you're thinking of to recommend for future implementation?
If I can just start with some kind of overarching, we, we will take a close look at your existing plans and map out the connections between those and where you are today. That's a big baseline piece, is really creating a deep understanding of policy-wise where the township came from. But what I understand is this is the community's story. This is what has happened here and what has made the community what it is today. And I think Roseanne can speak more to how our engagement, especially in the early phases, early phase, will, will really empower folks to tell us their story.
What do you love about Radnor? It's going to be my first question. It really does, it talks about the past, but it talks about it in a way that's positive. I, I don't like to start off with what you want to change or what you don't like, because people are going to tell me that anyway. They're, they're always going to tell me that. But what I want to know is what you want to keep? What makes Radnor who you are? And your, your residents are going to be able to tell us that. And so those early phases where we're out and we're talking to people in that really accessible short survey component is where we're going to start seeing patterns. And those patterns might be different in different communities, because I know that you're, you're pretty large and you've got some different community areas that are going to have unique identities. So I don't want to treat Radnor as a monolith. I want to kind of get into each one of those areas and, and start understanding better. We, we have a few different ways that we're going to interact with people. We have focus groups that are in there. We also have stakeholder interviews. Some people are more comfortable one-on-one and having just a really like basic phone conversation. Some people are more comfortable in a group and, and dealing with a group dynamic. So we're going to be able to hear from people who are invested and love Radnor in different ways. And they're going to tell me what I need to know to make sure that your community character is carried through in whatever plan we get forward with.
And can I just add one thing? So this is where my architecture, wow, that's really loud, sorry. This is, this is, yeah, this is where my architecture comes into play. One of the things that we like to do in every single project is actually we walk with the community. We have, you know, the stakeholders, some of the stakeholders, we walk with them, we walk around their downtown, we walk around the places that we're going to study and do these workshops. And one of the things that we do by walking around with them is that we're taking pictures. And so we're trying to see and understand about the architecture, but also the footprint, the urbanism that was there before. You know, it was so interesting actually being at the library today, because they actually have maps of Radnor, you know? I mean, you could start taking those maps and very easily on the iPad, you could lay them one on top of the other, you could start really understanding why is it that things are there. But also in conversation with everybody else, you know, you understand how is it the places, you know, like, what was it, like Lydia was telling us about the skateboard, the rollerblade, the rollerblading rink, you know? And I even drew one in there, by, by the way. But, you know, the rollerblading and what that meant for the commu, what that means for the community and that connection of how people have that connection with the rollerblade and how can we make that happen nowadays? It's actually the kind of connection that I believe you're trying, you're speaking of, you know? How is it that you are, you almost bring back some of those nice, wonderful things that make Radnor totally different from the rest of the communities around it, you bring it back in the context of nowadays, you know? And that's one of the ways that we do it. So by talking to people, understanding, actually doing the nerdy walk and like nerdy, like looking at plans and all this stuff, and, and taking pictures and asking a lot of questions.
Thank you. I think we are at time. If you want to, one last, one last comment or we will say thank you.
Yeah. What do you, what do you love about Radnor?
What do I love about Radnor? You know, I think, well, I mean, I love a lot of things. I love the people, I love the land, I love the open spaces, but I like where it's situated. I like the convenience to the city and you're just as close to open space and, and, you know, so I think it's kind of that, that perfect in the middle kind of community.
Putting me on the spot. Well, you showed a great picture of Carrill. I love the community. I love the fact that, you know, you can live in a twin or a single-family home. There are parks there, there's walk to dining, very similar to what Anna Marie said, pardon me, Anna Marie. That's really, you know, why, while I'm here, the schools are excellent. It's a great place to raise a family.
Well, thank you so much. We are really learning to love Radnor and we really hope that we get to work with you. Thank you for the opportunity tonight.
Thank you. Great detail. Appreciate it. Appreciate your time and taking the last spot and staying so late. So thank you very much. Bill, do you have anything to add?
I do not. Thank you. And actually, no, that, I do want to thank the commissioners, especially the four of you that are here and those that couldn't be with us in person. Hopefully, they were able to tune in and watch from wherever they're at. Excited to take the next step. This is an exciting project.
And I just want to say thank you to Commissioner Borowski for chairing, Commissioner Farhi and Commissioner Myers for sort of leading us. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Jones, I'm mixing up my committees. Sorry, Anna Marie. Thank the three of you very much for getting us to this place. You brought back three absolute fabulous candidates with great proposals and I thank you all for your work.
Can I, so can I just quickly add, ask about next steps? So I know, Bill, we talked, did we talk about that or, so what's, or Kevin, what's the thought on next steps?
Yes, the, the plan tonight was to hear the three presentations and then allow the commissioners the next week to digest what you've heard tonight and then have an agenda item on the 18th regular Board of Commissioners meeting for final discussion and decision. The agenda itself will be listed, the item will be listed generically and then the board can discuss in public and allow for public comment and then ultimately make a decision on the firm. That, that was the plan as discussed. Obviously, it's up to the commissioners on how you want to move forward, but that's, that's where we're at tonight.
Yeah, I think, I think we did, at least the committee, we agreed that that would be the, the process. So Commissioner Murray, if you're good with that.
Yeah, I think that's great. I would encourage anybody who has an interest in the detail of the proposals to check the website sometime tomorrow. We will be posting all of the slide decks, so you can look a little bit more deeply. But next Monday will be the commissioner vote on who we, who we will hire for this work.
Can we, Bill, and would we be able to, once you guys get the stuff posted, send out a township, kind of one of the township blasts that you guys do, you know, so people are alerted that it's there? You know, I'll try to put out my newsletter tomorrow.
Yep.
If anyone else can, but if you guys could do that, just so people know.
Yep, absolutely. Yep, planning on it. Bill, just...
Sorry, one, one question. What's the protocol? Because their phone numbers are probably going to be listed somewhere on, on the information if it's put out on the web. I can't believe I said web. If it's put out online. I mean, I'm not going to contact them, my questions have been answered, but is it appropriate for a resident to contact them just during this phase or next phase? If you could speak to that, I don't...
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, this is me personally speaking, I'm not sure it would be appropriate for residents to reach out directly to these folks. I mean, they, the residents work through the commissioners. To the extent that information is in the presentations that the firms would not want to be viewed publicly, we have disclosed very clearly to all the firms throughout the process that these presentations were being posted on the website and that we were being very transparent about that. So, you know, they, when they submit the information, they know where it's going to end up.
Okay, thanks. I just, for the people at home, I don't know.
Sure, yep.
Okay, I'm going to call for adjournment. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.